Thank you so much. Grace, we're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Vice President.
Motion to recess executive session reconvene in open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to receive said claim and forward it to the Rhode Island Inter Local Trust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's just a little cleanup from a previous session on eight fourteen. Motion to authorize the purchase of one ten Enterprise Center for the maximum three point four million, which includes all interest costs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Intended.
Intended.
Intending costs.
Intended costs. Okay. Oh, that's right, intended. Sorry. Let me say it again.
You want him to repeat that?
Can you repeat it?
Sure.
I don't have a bunch of caution, please repeat it.
Authorize the purchase one ten Enterprise Center for a maximum of three point four million dollars includes all intended costs. And that was on eight fourteen two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we'll get to that in a little bit.
Motion to pass said resolution from eight fourteen twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
This is from nine eighteen, so September eighteenth. Motion to approve and authorize the execution of the development agreement and ground lease agreement for West Main Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll get to that in a few minutes as well, okay? Um, Peter, you have a a motion you're gonna repeat?
Uh, we got him fired, you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, make motion to ratify the appointment of Town Chief Robert McCall as the interim fire chief.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we had to clean up some executive session stuff.
Yeah, one more motion.
I gotta finish up.
Okay.
This is that authorize the town administrator to execute the memorandum of agreement for said, uh, temporary position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
One more.
Motion to approve amendment number four, employment agreement with the town administrator, subject to the town solicitor's review and authorize the council president to execute.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Okay. Is that it?
A motion to seal the minutes.
Okay.
Yep. Motion to seal the executive session minutes pursuant to section forty-two forty-six seven of Rhode Island General Law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Um, before we, we're gonna talk about some of those things in executive that we just voted upon in public that we had to come out and vote, we voted on bottom in executive session, have to vote upon them in public, and then we're gonna have some discussion on that, okay? Having said that, I would just, before we get started, I would like to just ask for a moment of silence. Um, uh, we lost, uh, on September eighteenth, we lost David Eads. David was, um, um, a member of the Middletown. Uh, he was a tech, uh, detective corporal, retired after twenty-three years with the Middletown Police Department. He was, um, he was living in Florida, uh, when I worked in at the Public Works in the mid-eighties. Um, when I was going to school, Dave was an officer then, and I can still see him now. He was, he always had a joke, and he was always chewing gum. He was just a nice guy, good family guy, got to know his family a little bit. And, uh, so I just asked for a moment of silence for Dave and his family. Okay, thank you. Okay. Now, um, Wendy, I just wanna make sure with all these motions, we have them right. We're gonna do the presentation first, correct?
Are you gonna make a motion to, um,
Move it up?
Item number three up?
Yeah. Yeah.
Second. Over.
Motion to move item number three up on the agenda to now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're gonna move, just gonna make a presentation. We have a teacher of the year here with us, Christine Clancy this evening, so we would like to recognize Christine. So number three is a citation of the council in reference to twenty twenty-four Teacher of the Year Christine Clancy.
Motion to begin said presentation.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. So. All right. Tom has the, has the goods. Um, I'm just gonna do a little brief about Christine and her short, and her career and, um, so, um, Christine's a guidance counselor at, at the high school, and she was named in September as a twenty twenty-four Teacher of the Year by the Middletown School Committee. Um, whether it's organizing Career Day or countless other student-centered, uh, events at Middletown High School, providing an ear to anyone having a bad day. Clancy is known as one of the linchpins of the school. Her husband Michael's a social studies teacher at the school, who's with us this evening as well. A nineteen ninety-six graduate of Middletown High School, Christine was inducted into Middletown High School Athletic Hall of Fame in twenty twenty-three for excellence in girls' basketball. I'd ever played girls' basketball, but I can tell you, when we used to play, um, the thirty and over league at the middle school, she used to play with us, and I had a got her a few times, and, uh, she was pretty tough, you know? So I'll never forget that. Um, previously, September, uh, Superintendent Billy Niemeyer thanked Clancy for all the diligence and constant commitment to the students and staff. Christine has been a role model for students throughout the years, Niemeyer said. She's a key factor in his, in his, in her student's success. Christine is truly dedicated to the students of Middletown. Um, so speaking for the school student, uh, body, Senior Landon Resende is agreed. Certainly, it could not be more well deserved, said Landon, the student representative of the school committee. Christine has been critical, has been a critical asset to student success, so. Christine, we congratulate you. We have a, a proculmation, uh, citation for you, rather, I'd like to read. So, the town of Middletown, be it hereby known that all the Middletown Town Council hereby offers its sincerest grat, congratulations to Christine Clancy in being reconne, in recognition of being selected by the Middletown School Committee as twenty twenty-four Teacher of the Year. The town councillors extend their very best wishes to you and your future endeavors, given this seventh day of October twenty twenty-four. Congratulations.
Right here? Mike? I can honestly say I've never said words with this type of mic in my hand, so thank you. Um, I'd just like to say thank you to the town council for honoring me here tonight. Um, this is a tremendous honor that, um, I have received this past year, becoming Middletown Teacher of the Year. As was mentioned, I am a Middletown alum. I have been teaching in Middletown, this is my twenty-fifth year. Um, so I am extremely honored to have been chosen as this year's Teacher of the Year, so thank you for this honor also.
Christine, great job, and so we have the, uh, town tile for you, and I believe, Wendy, a town clock is the town clock. Nice town tile, whether it's a tile clock, and I don't know if it has batteries or not, but I don't know if we do that, but I'm sure, do you have batteries? But we thank you, Christine, I mean, you know, you're in the trenches every day, you worked your way up all these years, and, you know, it's, 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 um, teachers like yourself that have an impact on students for the rest of their life. I mean, Mrs. Von Villas was, I had her in eleventh and twelfth grade, and she was tough. Until this day, I mean, we, I can, I can get away disagreeing with her more now, but it's those folks that have those impacts on you for your entire life, and I'm sure that, uh, you've had that on many students, so we appreciate that. Thank you, congratulations. You bet. All right, let's, uh, let's get started with number two. Number two is a resolution of the council in reference to appropriating, uh, three million four hundred thousand dollars to finance the acquisition of a library and all attendant, attendant expenses, including but not limited to land acquisition and capitalized interest, and approving the financing thereof through the issuance of appropriation obligation in the amount not to exceed three point four million dollars.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Um, we have a motion, a second to pass. Do you want me to talk about that now, Sean, or you wanna wait till we do them together?
My, my suggestion is that you pass the resolution just so that it's clean for, for bond counsel and for.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second to pass. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Um, let's move on, and this is where we're gonna talk about, um, West Main Road and this library project that, uh, um, so number four is the town updates. The town ministry providing an update on town projects. A, West Main Road project, and B, the library project.
Motion to begin said town projects update.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Sean.
Mr. President. Um, so this evening, there was a vote, uh, from the executive session about the purchase of one ten Enterprise. Uh, the council just passed a resolution authorized funding of three point four million dollars, um, to fund that purchase. Uh, so what I'm gonna do is start talking about what that is and how we got there, uh, and then I'll ask, uh, the council or the solicitor, uh, chime in when I've, I've missed an important point. Uh, one of the things that's been on the town's radar, um, from a capital spending standpoint, is the replacement of the library in West Main Road. Um, over the years, I think it's been, um, in the paper and discussed that, uh, the building that was built in the nineteen forties as a daycare center for the Navy, um, has significant, uh, structural issues. And that, um, as we looked at replacing the schools, a big part of the debt, uh, study that we did was looking at how much it would cost to replace that building, uh, knowing that that was coming. A second part of that discussion was that we were looking at, uh, moving that building so that the affordable housing component of our West Main Road project could be constructed. So when we looked at the replacement of the building, uh, one of the things that occurred while Teresa Koche was our town librarian is they, they undertook a, a planning process in which, uh, the library, uh, the library board of trustees and the public put together a, a planning program document to look at what, what a new modern library would look like for the town of Middletown. Um, that document is available on the town website, and essentially what they identified is a, a new space. Um, a lot of it is based around community programs, uh, concepts like, uh, the library of things, where we're not just lending out library books, but, um, uh, items that are, are used within the community, um, often. Uh, and they came up with a program that was roughly around thirty thousand square feet, uh, which is comparable to communities around us with a population similar to ours. Um, and when I, when I say it's, it's, it's a, it's a building program, it's built around the idea of what, what programs we wanna provide to the community. When we looked at the cost of that construction for that project, um, which we estimated to be about eight hundred dollars a square foot, we came up with a project that would cost approximately twenty-four million dollars. Uh, so that, that is sort of the starting point and, and sort of the cost or capital obligation that we've been carrying forward. Uh, as we've been looking at the West Main Road, a big part of the analysis and how we move forward with both projects has been, um, how do we, we afford twenty-four million dollars? What are the other costs associated with it? Uh, one of the challenges we have is that the Potsie Field property, uh, there's a public benefit conveyance on it, and we have to basically move, uh, or replace that space in a, a different area as we develop the property. Um, we also have to improve it, so there was, uh, cost associated with improving wherever we moved the, uh, Potsie Field, uh, property. And we've looked at, when we looked at all of those things as well, it's a cost to operate temporarily during a construction phase. Um, we actually got up to a cost estimate of thirty-two million dollars. When we looked at reimbursement, we'd get down to a cost, net cost of twenty-two, twenty-three million dollars. Uh, so during the summer, when we're, we're, we're planning this, we're looking, I think primarily, we were, we were focusing on where could the oper, the, the library operate temporarily? And we stumbled upon a building, basically in back of town hall located at one ten Enterprise, that was for sale, and it was also available for lease, and that's, that's sort of how this, this idea came, you know, came from. We were looking at, okay, if we had to operate the library temporarily, you know, one ten Enterprise, that, that might be a place to go. Um, part of the challenge there was it wasn't gonna be on the market long, because there was a number of people bidding on it, uh, because it is a, a, it is a high-quality property. It's, it's thirty thousand square feet, similar to what we were looking for. Uh, it was built in the nineties, it's, it's, it's built with steel, split rock on the outside. Um, it's a one-story building, it has a concrete floor, so we wouldn't have to worry about loading books on top of, uh, the structural load related to that. Um, it was originally designed as a light man, uh, a, a high-tech manufacturing space for KVH, uh, Embrace Home Loans currently owns that they had converted it into a call center. Uh, but the bones, the structure of the program, it really lent itself to a library, um, as well as the layout of the building being single-story, having multiple entryways, uh, and, uh, really providing a lot of floor space for the kind of, uh, things that had been identified in the, the building program that the library had developed, as well as the programs that Kim and the current board of directors have talked about, the kind of things that they wanted to provide to the community. Um, and then at some point, the, the discussion quickly turned, I would say over the last two months, probably less, of why, why, why are we talking about leasing this space? We should look at the cost of, of renovate, purchasing and renovating it in lieu of building something that was gonna cost north of twenty, you know, just south of twenty-three million dollars. So when we looked at the cost of the building, three point three million dollars, the next thing we looked at is how much would it cost, you know, how much renovation would have to go into it to make it a library? Uh, we looked at a similar project at Salve Regina University, where they renovated the first floor of their library. So we, we figured the cost of renovation on the high side is seven point five million dollars. Uh, there's a couple million dollars still related to relocating property, but instead of spending thirty-two million dollars, we saw a cost of basically twelve point seven million dollars. And whether we call that savings or cost avoidance, when we looked at the amount of uh, reimbursements that, that would come in from the state, uh, that got the cost, project cost down to eight point seven million dollars. So instead of spending twenty, twenty-three million dollars, just round numbers for new construction, we should be looking at the fourteen million dollar price tag to purchase this property and renovate it. Uh, and that's a discussion that quickly, uh, came forth. I'm sorry, eight, eight point seven million dollar cost, a fourteen million dollar savings. Uh, so that's what brought us to that decision. It was, it was one where we were looking at, um, having something that's comparable in size and quality, something that already exists, um, really in some ways a better location, being near bus routes, but in a, a better location in the sense that it's not on the main road. Um, a larger outdoor space, um, again, that single, single story, it was available. Um, uh, really just, just a lot of pluses. Uh, the town council, the library board have a chance to, to tour the building. Um, there seems to be a lot of excitement, um, I think, looking at the initial presentation of it, and then actually seeing the space. Um, it has been, been well-received, and I think quickly everyone is, from a leadership standpoint, has been able to vision, uh, what that space could be for, not only the town, but more importantly, for our residents. Um, just some other points that we had considered when looking at this purchase. The, uh, the north side of the town center, where we were looking at building the library, uh, there are some delays anticipated, um, related to the transfer, there's a, there's a couple Navy parcels that we would need to get transferred to the town um, in order to move the library from its current location to that location on the north side of the property, so that not only would complicate the move of the library, but complicates the success of, uh, the private-public venture on West Main Road. Um, so that was another factor that played into this. This gives us the ability to, uh, be in the building, um, and be operational as a library. We're targeting a two-year, two-year timeframe to do that, uh, basically looking at, um, six months to do the design, um, and then other six to twelve months to do the renovation. So, um, there is a very quick turnaround on, on acquiring this building and then turning it around so that we can, we can put it into production. Uh, I think those are the main things. I just, as far as the financing, I think this is an important part. Um, what, what was presented tonight was that we're borrowing the three point four million dollars to purchase the project. Um, the interest related to that will come out of the operating budget, so there is no need to go out, um, and tax people additional money or, or look for additional revenue somewhere, that's money that we have in-house. Um, after a year, this is a one-year note, we will go out and finance the entire project after we have, uh, and, you know, a good estimate of what the cost would be, an estimate that's reconciled between the architect and the construction, um, manager of the project, similar to what we've done with the school department. At that time, we would go out and finance the total cost of the project. And what the finance director has done already is we've identified where, uh, at first, we'll finance the project with money that we have in reserves from the, mostly from the public-private venture that we have, um, between the town and the Navy for providing public safety services. Uh, and then after that, the debt service would be funded from the rents, uh, not the rents, but the, the non-tax revenues we get from the GMH Housing Project, where we provide public safety services. Um, those, those, that debt service payment is currently covering the police station, which will be paid off here within, um, a couple of years. Um, we'll basically move the debt service payment from the, uh, police station over to the library. Uh, so there is no additional tax bill coming to taxpayers, um, from this, this move. So we're basically similar to how we constructed the police station and fire station, we're able to, uh, build a new library rent, well, buy a library, renovate it, get it into production, uh, and not have it impact the tax rate. I think that's, that's probably a good point for me to stop and, and maybe let, uh, Paul or someone else chime in, or Peter, if I've missed something. Uh, but those are the highlights. Um, I can tell you, when I first brought this, this idea to the council, um, I was very clear with the council, I, I was losing some sleep over it in the sense that, um, I think it was gonna be difficult to go back to the community and borrow, again, you know, spend up to thirty-two million dollars on this project, a net of twenty-two million dollars. Uh, but the way that we have been able to structure this purchase and renovation, uh, we can do it in such a way that, uh, we don't have to raise taxes, um, and put that burden on the, the taxpayer. We're basically like the police station and fire station, able to, uh, get a modern facility without having to burden the taxpayers with the cost of it. Uh, the other pieces, with the success of the, uh, West Main Road Private Partner Venture, uh, we're able to get out of the way of that development and allow the developers the opportunity to build the housing and the other commercial, uh, property on, uh, within that development. Um, and we'll talk a little bit that in the second part of this discussion, um, but that will provide upwards of one point one million dollars of, of tax relief uh, each year to, uh, to residents. So, um, we're really securing both of those things at the same time, again, avoiding the cost and, uh, securing that additional, um, non-tax revenues that will, will help everybody in town.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. So we bought a building, and we did it because we're gonna save about fourteen million dollars for what would have, what would have cost, uh, the, the town or the taxpayers on. What would have cost the, the town or the taxpayers on West Main Road as Sean alluded to. Currently, there's a thirty percent reimbursement from the town. We're trying to get it to fifty percent, but currently it's thirty percent. Don talked a little bit about. The financing piece, no cost to the taxpayer, just like we did when we built the police station, just like we did when we renovated the fire station. And put the addition on the fire station. We're able to do that because in. Two thousand and six, when we negotiated with GMH, which is currently the landings. They wanted us to take over the police and fire services and at that time. Uh, we negotiated a, I believe it was around nine hundred and twenty four thousand dollars a year to do that. We also built in like a cola, an increase or an escalator each year. So. Right now, it's up to one point four million a year. Now, we still have debt on the police station. And the fire station in twenty twenty eight. Three hundred and, see the three hundred and twelve or three hundred and twenty one thousand fall off of debt falls off the police station. In twenty twenty nine, if police stations paid off another two hundred and ninety one thousand falls off in debt service. So that would give us about one point one million to be able to pay for this library. And that's how we're going to do it at no cost to the taxpayer. It's just the building's beautiful. I would recommend if it's right where the farmer's market was. Um, right be, right here behind Town Hall, right up this, if you go up one ten Enterprise. As Sean said, it was built, uh, I believe it was built in nineteen eighty eight for KVH. Currently, uh, uh, we were lucky, Embrace Loans, um, entertained our offer. And they liked, uh, they liked the, the, the project that the town was proposing. And so, um, they went with our offer. So i- it is comparable to the new library. It's not if or when we, if we have to replace libraries, when. Because that current library, as Sean said, it's sinking into the ground, some of the, some of the structure. So it was going to be negotiated as part of the, the West Main Road. Uh, project, but now. That frees up, we don't have to move Potsie, we can move it. But we can keep Potsie Field in that where the library was going to go, the new library. So now that project becomes twenty percent green space of the total project. So that, that's, that's pretty much where we're at. The, um, the roof is. Was put on in twenty thirteen, is guaranteed to twenty twenty eight, the AC units. About twelve to fourteen years old, uh, we're going to take a look at those. We did have a. We did have an engineer come in and take a look at the building. Structurally, the building is. He said it's a very, very sound, well-maintained building and I, again, I encourage you to take a look at it. It's beautifully maintained, the landscaping's gorgeous, there's a patio out there. It has a small gym, it has plenty of storage. For the library, because that's what they really need, one of the things that that they need. It's just, it's just a deal we couldn't refuse because, or pass up with with no cost to the taxpayer and. It's, it's, as Sean said, we wouldn't have to rent a space. To temporarily put the, put the library in while that new one was being built over there, if that's the, if that's the route we went. So it'll be about eighteen months or so before we're able to, we need to really nail down the, uh, the, um. The, um. Renovation costs. I, I personally, I'm not an engineer, I personally don't see it seven and a half million, but that's just me. When you walk in, if you get a, we can get to, uh, open it up at some point, once we, we have a purchase and sales agreement, we're going to close. I don't know, Peter, another week or two on it.
Correct.
And, um. It's, it was impressive, it was impressive. And so. Um, you know, one of the things, one of the questions we mid, did meet with the, uh, library director. And the board of trustees, because we thought that was the right step to take to let them know instead of just announcing it and hey. This is what we're doing. So, you know, they're a big part of what they do over there. So we need to make sure that, uh, they were on board with it or had any questions. We met with the, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, last week to bring them up to speed on, on what was transpiring. It moved pretty fast. Once it became available, there was some bids on it and, you know, we've had a special meeting about it, an executive session. And, um, you know, about a month ago or so, or whenever that was and, uh. You know, we had to move pretty quick, so. It was almost like some of these things, uh, I don't know if this is a good analogy or not, but almost like a, like a puzzle starting to fall into place. Between, you know, what's going to go on over here and we'll talk about West Main Road in a minute. And it also allowed us a savings of not having to relocate Potsie Field. Because as Sean stated, there's a land covenant, covenants, is that what it's called, land covenants? Agreement with the Navy from years back that if you move that field, you have to find an equal value parcel. So say it's, what is it, two acres, Potsie Field or three acres?
Uh, it's actually about three point eight all in, including parking and.
Right. So say it's four acres, you have to find, not necessarily four acres, you have to find. If that's worth a million dollars an acre and it's four acres, you'd have to find a parcel worth four million dollars. So we were looking at different spots to do that. Um, but when this became available, it made sense that we can just move that park right there. And keep it on the west side, which needs, needs open space over there as well. So we think it's a good thing, uh, that's our op- uh, the council's opinion. Um, we think we're going down the right road with, you know, um, with no cost to the taxpayer. And, um, I think we're pretty fortunate to be able to, to be able to do that. Um, it's certainly not a pat on the back, it's what we're charged to do, to look at these types of opportunities. Um, and it just made sense. One of the questions that did come up about it was. Couple of questions was, well, what about the bus route? Because the bus route stops right over here in Enterprise Center. So I talked to my good friend, who I was on the council with, two thousand and four to two thousand and eight Senator De Palma. Yesterday and I said, Lou, listen, after we met with the library, uh, board of trustees and and the citizens advisory committee. Who made, who recommended the improvements to. The initial design of the West Main Road with the, with the walking or the bike path behind it and other. Improvements and we're going to reengage those folks as well. You know, if the bus route stops over here, we can't have people walking up to that building. So Lou met with, uh, he followed up with me today, they met with, uh, he spoke with the director of Ripda. If I have that correct. And, uh, they're certainly open to possibilities and it has a round, like a turnaround at the very top. What's nice about it too is West House right there is. That the en- the entrance is right there. One of the entrances, the back entrance is right, right where the turnaround is and there's a sidewalk where those folks that live there. Buck Road and Ludlow Road are right behind the building. I don't know if we can work something out there, maybe with. With that neighborhood, we can get a walkway through, but that's why we want to engage the citizens advisory committee again. Because they did a great job coming back with recommendations on. On making improvements to West Main Road, proposed West, West Main Road project at the time. And we need them to come back and, uh, one of their concerns was. You know, the library was kind of, was Middletown Commons or the community center because the library would be the focal point over there. Um, and it would draw, uh, um, some folks in with events. So we're going to reengage them. And, um, Karen, I know you're here tonight, I know you would like to maybe say a couple of words about that. If possible. Yeah, that'd be great. Um, because look, we, we, we can't all do this ourselves and we need partners like that, we need partners like the library board of trustees. And, um, I think it's important we reengage them where they maybe can connect. Some type of path from the west side to, um, this piece of property as well.
Do you, do you want me to say name and address?
Sure.
Sure. Karen Barbera, thirty six Walcott Avenue. So, um, we're very excited about this, the CAC, we, we were able to pivot pretty fast. So, uh, as co-chair of the CAC along with Melissa Welch. We want to say that our committee is all on board to re-envision and refocus to create this new idea. For the green space that will be available for the community at the town center. We were all equally as excited to help this new library building to have its best vital and creative outdoor space possible. And of course, we will want, uh, input from the public on this and, um, to make these two new. Important spaces the best they can be. So that's.
Yeah, we're looking forward to, to working with you again and you guys make, you guys make some really nice recommendations. And, and it doesn't have to be a ball field, it can be some type of park. Uh, we're obviously going to keep the same name because we're honest and, um, um, Chris Potts, I believe it is. I graduated with, uh, new assistant, didn't graduate as assistant, graduated her husband. Um, Kim Potts, so that's, he was, he was killed in Iraq, I believe, so that's why we named the field after him. But, um, but we'll certainly keep the name, um, but it could be whatever recommendations we come back.
Yeah.
With, as long as the land value is the same. Based on that land covenants with the Navy from years ago. And it gives, again, twenty percent of that project will be green space.
Right. So we're, we're looking for multi-use, um, public playground, um. Uh, ban shell perhaps, but you know, the idea is we haven't solidified any of them because this is all new to us. So. We're going to take those ideas that we were creating and, uh, and applying to the green space and see where we can. Make that very valuable to the community. So, so there will be. The most important part is that we're going to have community, a community, uh, section to the town center that means something. So.
Excellent. Thank you, Karen. Okay, any councils want to, um. Want to add? Have anything they want to add about Tom?
I would just, I just want to reiterate because in those couple of meetings we had, uh, initially. There was still some confusion. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the. Library was never part of the developer's job. The middle, Middletown ourselves, the town had to pay for that. So this isn't, there's no change here, it's the same as it was before, but just to make sure everybody knows. This is on the town, was never on the developer.
Okay. Any councils, Sean, anything else? I want to make sure we covered everything.
I think the only thing I wanted to stress is that this really popped up. Um, it was a very, we had a very short. Time period to, to act on it. Th- this isn't something that we would be able to liberate over six or seven months. I, I know that the timing could be concerning, but again, to avoid that cost of the fourteen million dollars, that, that's the. A big part of why we acted the way we did, uh, because it was going to be a limited opportunity. Uh, for us to make a good decision for the library and the community, but also, uh, for the people that have to pay for it. So.
Fine.
Yeah, just, and just to follow up on that, there were a number of other parties that were very interested in that property. And were, you know, if, if given the opportunity, prepared to outbid the town to get it. So, uh, we were very fortunate that, uh, Embrace Home Loans, the seller, um. Was very much in favor of the towns using it, uh, as a library and we were able to secure it.
Yeah, okay.
Also shortened the, and it also shortened the timeline.
Oh, tremendously. So. Okay, uh, Sean, now we're going to talk about, uh, West Main Road.
Correct. So, uh, one of the votes that came out of executive session is that the town council had authorized the. Execution of the. Agreement between the town and the development partners for, uh, West Main Road. Uh, and that agreement, so it's, it's a long process. I'm, I'm going to just talk a little bit about what's included in the plan. Um, and then Peter can correct me when I start talking about the process. So. Uh, a, a plan, uh, an agreement has been reached, there's two components to it, there's a, there's a development portion and then there's a, a lease. Once we get past the development. So there's, there's two stages of the project. Uh, a big part of the work that's going to happen now. Uh, now that the agreement has been signed, is the, signed, is the developer will now start going through the. The planning and zoning process, um, and there might be a better way of stating that, but. But there basically is a ramp where they need to go through. Uh, to secure approvals from the various, uh, state agencies as well as town boards. Uh, to actually make the development happen. Uh, so that, that is the next step. I believe that is, we anticipate that will take upwards of thirty two months, is that?
Uh, it's, so the first thing that would have to happen.
Could you guys just make sure you're speaking to the mics, please?
So yeah, th- this is, it's the first step in a very long process. Uh, the first step in that process is going to be a proposed zoning overlay. Uh, for the town center property. Uh, and that would, will go first to the planning board and the planning board will hold a public hearing on that. It will come back to the council, council will hold public hearings. On the rezoning of that property, which is currently basically zoned as a public parcel. Uh, then, uh. Assuming that that passes, then the developer will begin the actual development review process. Uh, that will be in front of the planning board, uh, just like any other, uh, project, uh, of the scale. That project will go through master plan, preliminary plan and the final plan review. There'll be approvals required from DOT, from DEM. Uh, but there'll be a number of public hearings that will have to take place in front of the planning board. Um, and I, I would say. You know, that that process, I would anticipate from start to finish is probably an, an eighteen month process, you know, beginning with the zoning. Uh, before you're, you're at a point where you may actually have the full project approved. So it, it's, once again, this is the first step in a, in a very long process. And there'll be a number of opportunities for public hearings throughout.
Right. So just because there's a, and there's an agreement, there's still a lot of hurdles that they have to, they have to get through. You know, as Peter stated, traffic studies.
Hurdles with public comment.
That's right.
The public will remain involved, the citizen advisory committee who, you know, Karen just got up and represented, they would be involved. Um, but there is, there is, there is a lot of input that, that the community still has. And is able to make, uh, during the process. Um, the project itself, uh, and I, we, we've reviewed a lot of this in public meetings, uh, there's a. Um, a hotel component, um, that's planned on the property. Um, there's housing, one hundred and fifty housing units, uh, ten percent of those would be affordable housing units by definition. Uh, and that's important, especially as, not only from an affordable housing standpoint, but. There's a lot of discussion and concern about Equinix Island in the sense that. Um, we have a large number of families that are going to move here. Um, related to the Coast Guard relocating, uh, frigates, cutters here, um, as well as NOAA ships and jobs. So. Um, we really have to be in the housing business and, and having a hundred and fifty units is, is key to that. Uh, there's a mixed retail component that is part of the project. Uh, and there's also, um, at this point, and the preliminary design to restaurants that are, that are part of the, the original proposal. So it really is a. A mixed use development. Uh, the one major change which, which we just talked about is that the library wouldn't be at the north end of the project. Um, however, there would be that, uh, town space, which could be open space or some other. Recreational space that, that would be available to residents. And if you really think about it, that's probably one of the denser areas in Middletown from a standpoint of housing where you have. You have Ridgewood on one side of the highway, the Ridgewood neighborhood, uh, you have, uh. Housing to the, to the north, uh, Harbor Village, and then you have the Cottington Cove housing in the back with. Not only Navy people, but also visiting Navy from the, uh. Officers, foreign officers that are at the war college. So really, um, a diverse neighborhood with a lot of infrastructure for walking. I think sometimes we, when you drive in West Main Road, you sort of see it from the back end, but there's really a deep neighborhood with a lot of people that, that would live in there. And with that mixed development will benefit from having those, um. Those, uh, you know, stores, retail available, um, makes it a, a, you know, a more vibrant area. Just talking a little bit about the revenue, I had mentioned that, the one point one million dollar number, that's one of those things that will be phased in over time as the development comes online. Uh, it doesn't start on, um, day one. Um, but once the development is up and running, we anticipate that we would see in real estate tax. Upwards of five hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Uh, generating one hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars in hotel tax. Approximately thirty thousand dollars in additional meals and beverage tax. Uh, and then the ground lease itself, and I think this is important, um, the town's not selling the land underneath the project, we're leasing the land for ninety nine years. Uh, the first payment is three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. I'm sorry, three eighty seven five, three, three eighty seven five. And that, that rent escalates twelve point five percent every five years. Uh, so that, that's, that's essentially the payment that the town receives. And I think another piece here is that the developers are responsible for all of the in- infrastructure development. This isn't a situation where it's. It's pad ready in the sense that they show up and they can start building something. Uh, the developers will be responsible for the storm water, the wastewater, uh, the road paving systems, the sidewalks, all of that infrastructure. Is an investment that developers will have to make on the property. We, we basically are providing that, that ninety-nine-year lease, uh, for them to build and then to, uh, operate, um, the different, the different pieces of the development. So, uh, again, this is something that started in two thousand and six with the BRAC base realignment, when, uh, some of the property was, was, uh, the Navy Lodge property was, uh, surplus. Uh, we started out with some studies that were done early on, not only looking at how can the Navy Lodge property be reused, but, uh, that entire corridor. Uh, and then, and then also with that conversation, not only looking at what could be developed on that property, but how can the other side of the street be improved, um, as investments made on the west side? Uh, because we do have a number of properties there that are, again, probably, um, you know, we have, we have two vacant, uh, properties in the sense that Ruby Tuesdays and the Planet, uh, Planet, Planet, um, the former Papa Gino's building, uh, those are, those are empty right now. So hopefully with this type of reinvestment, you know, this is really the first really economic stimulus we've seen in that portion of the town. Uh, very valuable property in the sense that you have that many car trips. Uh, and we, we foresee this being designed well to get people out of their cars into the neighborhood and taking advantage of the, uh, the development that occurs.
Okay. Any councilors have any questions or want to add anything to that, what Sean just said? Okay, Sean, when is a, when is an updated drawing going to be available since the change of the library? Because I think that's important that, I think, I think that's important that, you know, once they start having these hearings and, um, you know, it's well advertised and well attended and, um, you know, people like visuals. I know I'm a visual. I want to see what it's gonna, what that would look like now that that changes and it, and it just happened, so.
I will, I will talk to the developer and we'll get that to you as soon as possible and we'll also get that on the website.
Okay. John? John? Yes, sir.
All right, Sean, I got a quick question. Sean, did you say that they get, they're talking five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in taxes?
Correct.
Originally it was a million dollars.
I think million has always been the total.
I read a million.
Again, I think we've always talked about the total dollar amount from the project being north of a million dollars.
I want to say, uh, everybody sitting here, including, uh, Mr. Logan that's not here, FYI, I voted for every one of yous. But I'm also very disappointed. This isn't going to be popular. As you know, I've spoken many times on this Middletown, Town Center, which I knew two years ago was a done deal. But we tried, a few of us. Okay? The, um, wait, what was this? It seems, it's things like this that discourage people from participating in local government. I have seen speakers at meetings disrespected when they shouldn't have been. I volunteered to be on the Middletown Center Advisory Committee because I live in one of the neighborhoods, Wood Road area. Okay? That's going to be really affected by this. Out of eleven volunteers, seven were chosen. One that I know of resigned, was replaced. So that's eight out of eleven. I never got a call. But I do notice that, and I don't want you to take this personal, but I do notice that there's a, um, the Vice President Sisla is a co-chairman on that. Lives on the other side of town, but I guess she realizes how this is going to affect the west side of Middletown. I was, uh, she, she spoke at one of these meetings and I happened to be the second speaker after her. I'm sorry, I followed her. I did not know there was any relationship. I asked innocently. And I was basically tried to be intimidated by Mr. Welch. This is, let me finish because this isn't, this isn't as personal as you think. I'd like an apology for that. There was no need for that. I asked a question. Somebody came up and spoke and they said their name was Welch. I look up there, I did vote for you. I see your name is Welch. Your face turned red. Okay, just a little advice. You've served here. I think you should get thick-skinned because if you're going to get that upset because I asked a simple question like that, I won't vote for you again. Not that you care. I could go on and on about the negative effects that the center will have, but let's talk about the traffic. It's almost laughable that the developers said there'd be a limited effect on traffic. Has anybody been in that part of town in the morning? I live on Wood Road. My wife works on the base. It takes her twenty, twenty-five minutes on a two-minute ride. That's in the morning. In the afternoon, forget it. So I don't know where they come up with these studies that it, there's going to be no effect to traffic. Yeah. What else are they telling us that isn't true? And the other thing is, how should we, why should we trust the town purchasing property when you turn it into a commercialization like this? I know, Paul, the twenty percent, that sounds good, but right now, what's the percentage? Okay, I, I really feel like, I'm sorry, I feel like you guys sold out the town's soul. And I know nobody really cares except the people that lived in there. And you know, I explained why people haven't spoken. I don't know why this is doing this. Now, when it comes, it comes to the traffic, it kind of reminds me of an old yogiism. Nobody goes to that restaurant anymore. It's not popular. Nobody goes there anymore. I'm sorry. The other thing, the infrastructure, okay, they're gonna, they're gonna pay for the, uh, putting everything in. Who's going to pay for my basement with two feet of sewage in it like I had a few years ago after they put up the, uh, the hotel up the road, uh, yeah, Holiday Inn Express? And, and the sewer lines couldn't handle it. Two feet of sewage and we had to fight with it. I don't think anybody was here, Paul, I think you were off, okay? That was in the days and I'll name it, Mr. Embry. Okay? We came to every council meeting, fought it, fought it, fought it for over a year before we were finally allowed that it was the town's issue. Lastly, though the developers are saying everything is so nice and beautiful and everybody is saying great, 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 you know something? Another old saying, because I'm old. The Yankees play it all.
I know you're, yeah, I'm sorry.
You can put a lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay. Thank you, John. Any councilors have any comments or questions about what Sean talked about? No? Okay. All right. So that was the town update, uh, more to come. And again, that's, we, we have a, we have an agreement in place. That doesn't mean that, uh, I mean, they still have a lot of hurdles to go through. They, they do. They have traffic. I mean, that's, and, and I, I tell you, just well, well attended. You know, so, um, I know, I know the folks that live in that area are, are disappointed. I understand that. You know, we're trying to just, you know, one of our jobs is generate revenue. And, you know, and I know, John, you said that, you know, I feel like, you know, we sold out on the, that piece of property. Some people look at it differently. You know, it's the most valuable piece of property that's not generating any revenue. So, I mean, you can look at it either side. I under, I understand that. So we have to make decisions for sustainability of, of, on the future. Uh, we're hoping that the revenue generated from this, we can put towards to pay for the school bond. That's what we've talked about and I'm hoping that's exactly what happens. So. Okay. Um, let's move on to... Yes, sir. Yes.
So the money we were going to generate off this property was going to go to the new library. Correct?
Correct.
And now that we're using other funds to build the library, can we make a motion that says the taxes that are generated off of this property will go towards the school bond? Can we make that decision?
I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that's what happens, but that's a great question. So, Sean? Is this money that comes in, is it, it's not restricted, correct?
The council hasn't restricted the money, no.
We can.
Um, I would need to talk to bond counsel. Well, not, well, I've talked to Karen Grandy because now we're getting into the area of the TIF when you're, when you're taking new tax dollars and restricting it. So right now, I would go in and it, as it currently comes in, it's unrestricted. It provides tax relief to the community overall. If we're, if we're specifically taking the money in and targeting it directly at the new revenue instead of providing tax relief, we're putting it towards debt service, which provides tax relief there. You, you would do that through the tax incremental financing and, and we would need to talk to Karen about how we would structure that.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that you'd say when it comes in, it would provide tax relief in the form of debt.
It wouldn't be done through a motion this evening. It would require more, more documentation.
Okay, so when would we know that?
Uh, you would ask me to look into it and then I would.
You could look into that? That'd be fantastic.
Okay.
Counselor agreeable to that?
Yeah, because we were gonna, we were gonna apply it towards the library.
Correct.
Right? So we should be able to apply it towards the library.
Originally the talks were, once we knew what the dollar amount would be, uh, generated, okay, we can use that money to pay for the, the library. But when we figured out this piece of property became available and we could do it at no cost to the taxpayers, then we shifted, the thought shifted toward, okay, we can use that money for, when it comes in, to offset the school, help offset the school bond. So. Okay, I'm glad, thank you for bringing that up. Yep. Okay. Uh, any other comments from councilors? Okay, thank you, everyone. Let's move on to the, um, number five, the town administrator will find an update on the school building project.
Motion begins, school building project update.
The motion is second to begin. All in favor? Aye, Sean.
Uh, the design update for the, since the last meeting, uh, the team have been working with the public safety representatives from the police and fire departments to review the updated plans. A lot of that has just been to review changes that have resulted from the value engineering. Uh, so that process is ongoing right now. Uh, from a project budget and schedule, the project remains on time and on budget. There's no change there. Uh, in regard to Ride, our stage three design development, uh, package has been, um, uploaded to Ride. Uh, we did that the week of nine-thirty, uh, and we're in the process of, of discussing, you know, questions and clar, making clarifications with Ride. We anticipate that the sixty percent construction document will be submitted to Ride in January of twenty-twenty-five, so we're ahead of a month on that submission. Um, I think last month I had represented that would happen in February of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, the two big things that are happening, uh, the team is in the process of scheduling a meeting with the planning board for the master plan submission. Uh, there's been some scheduling conflicts. It looks like that's probably going to take place, uh, the first, within the first two weeks of November. We're trying to find a good date that works with the planning board. Uh, so that is the next major hurdle. Um, the team did meet with the technical review committee. Uh, we've also had some meetings with the planning department just to clarify, uh, how, what, what items need to be included or amplified in the application so that we satisfy the requirements of the planning board. Uh, the second item I just want to bring to everyone's attention is on October twenty-third, it's the next meeting of the school building committee. Uh, there will be a presentation from Build RI at that meeting. Um, Build RI represents a number of the state-level labor unions. Um, and they will be making a presentation to the committee about the advantages of executing a project labor agreement for the project. Uh, so if someone's interested in learning more about project labor agreements, uh, Greg Mancini, who's the CEO of Build RI, will be down, um, and he will be presenting information about that. And that's the update that I have about the school project for this week.
Unless I missed it, I didn't hear on time and on budget.
The second item I said, but we'll finish with that.
Okay, I appreciate it. Just want to make sure that, uh, that was loud and clear.
It is loud and clear.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on to the public forum. Number six, pursuant to Rule Twenty-Five of the Rules of the Council, citizens may address the town on one subject only. Said subject of substantial town business need to discuss during the regular meeting nor related to job performance or personnel. Citizens may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the council clerk prior to the start of the meeting. All items discussed during the session will not be voted upon. So do we, do we have some forums?
We only have, uh, Anne Marie Logan filled out the two things, but one of them that she wanted. Public forum is actually.
Okay, so Anne Marie, are you here? So sorry to call you out like that, but, so, so the public forums for items that are not on the docket, both items that you want to talk about are on the docket, so we'll call you on the beach stickers and we'll call you on, Airbnb or short-term rentals. Okay? Okay, so we'll, we'll get to that as part of the beach passes, okay? Thank you. Okay, so is there anyone? We have no forums? Is there anybody on Zoom? Nobody raising their hand? Give them a second or two? Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
Motion to board as a, uh, Board of License Commission.
The motion acts as a Board of License Commission and second, all in favor? Aye. Act as the Board of License Commission, number seven. A public hearing has been advertised. Our butters have been notified, application Newport Pickleball LLC DBA Newport Pickle, one oh five Chasers Lane, for a class BV liquor license for the same premises for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five licensing year. This is new.
Public hearing is open.
We need a motion to open the public.
Motion to open the public hearing.
The motion is second, open the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. So the mo, public hearing's open. Is anyone here like to speak on, um, the liquor license, po, po, potential liquor license for, uh, BV liquor license for the Newport Pickleball where the old movie theaters were? Are you representing, sir? You're not offering any speech or anything? All right, awesome. Because we have a long docket. Okay. Excellent. So is there anyone like that? Any councilors have any questions? Wendy, I just have a question. So is this an open license or is this an additional license?
We have an open license. They didn't have to request.
Okay.
They didn't have to request you to exceed the cap. We have some open licenses.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Because this is for the new year, which will start December one, and the current license there, they didn't reapply and they're not reapplying.
Okay, so it's an open license?
An open license.
Okay, not an additional?
No.
Okay. Any councilors have any further questions? Anyone else in the public? Vice President?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
The motion is second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye.
Motion to grant said license.
The motion is second to grant said license and they've met all the obligations and criteria?
Right, we, we won't issue until that we have everything.
Okay. That, uh, council, you, you, okay, okay. The motion is second to grant, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Number eight, public hearing's been advertised, application received for the following named persons, firms, or corporations for renewal of alcoholic beverage licenses for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five licensing year. There is an attached list on the docket.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
The motion is second to open. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on number eight of the applications from the, uh, firms on, on the list for, uh, renewal of alcoholic beverage licenses for the upcoming year? Is there anyone on Zoom? Any councilors have any questions or comments? Has everyone submitted everything they need to submit?
We don't issue until we have everything.
You do. That's why you're the master clerk. Okay. Vice President?
Motion to close the public hearing.
The motion is second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose?
Motion to grant said licenses or renewals.
The motion is second to grant said license renewals. All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion carries, motion, sorry.
Motion to reconvene as a town council.
The motion is second to reconvene as a town council. All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Move on to the consent calendar. Any councilors want to pull any items off the consent calendar? Dennis, what number?
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixty.
Okay, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. And sixteen.
Motion approve the consent calendar with the exception of items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, okay, thank you. Number thirteen, communication of tax assessor. In reference to cancellation of taxes for certain Middletown residents.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
Have a motion is second to receive, all in favor? Aye, Dennis, you want to just tie the resolution in?
Sure.
Number fourteen, resolution of the council in reference to cancellation of taxes for certain Middletown residents.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Have a motion is second to pass, Council Toronto.
Yeah, I was just hoping that they give us an explanation of some of these texts. Some of these are, just curious what. Transaction type and date is.
I I'm not prepared. Um, I mean, I I think the schedule speaks for itself. This is something that's not new. The assessor provides. Uh, where there's there's appeals that have been processed, there's a. Uh, a reason code if if the council desires to go through this in detail. I suggest continuing this and Mr. Durgan can come to the next meeting and walk you through those.
Well, if no one else is interested in hearing about it, I can just meet with George.
Yeah, so I think as I as I look through it, as Sean said, there's codes that they give us, right? And the reason for that code. Um, like, you know, and some of it's Saint Jo- a lot of it's Saint George's, um, for different reasons. Um, some of it is.
Mr. President, I can. Expound at least on that aspect of it.
Why are you letting us struggle up here like this then?
Sorry.
All right, go right ahead.
Uh, so there were a number of. Lots that Saint George's owned that were essentially treated as part or. Part of the larger campus that fronted on a Walcott. Um, there were, I think, about five essentially residential house lots, but they were just part of the campus buildings on them. Uh, in discussions that we'd had with Saint George's. Uh, a number of years back over the tax assessments, we had suggested that they just merge those lots into the campus and then we wouldn't have to tax them. Um, and they did that uh. Two or three years back, however. The fact that the merger plan had been recorded and the lots had been eliminated, that message for some reason didn't get to the assessor's office. So we kept sending them a bill and they kept paying it. Uh, and it was just recently that that error was discovered. So that. Those items, at least regarding Saint George's, was to correct that error and to basically credit them for the taxes they paid that actually weren't.
Was that error on, was that on our part? We didn't re- we didn't record it or they didn't record it?
They recorded the subdivision plan.
Right.
But I think the left hand didn't necessarily know what the right hand was doing internally here. And so as a result, we kept, we sent the bill out for another year. So that.
Right.
That uh. Correction is for the, I think, the last tax year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so they give us, there's forty three reasons. And they're public. Um. You know, they range from, you know, tax assessor, number one. Uh, they uh, you know, from the taxes office. The the reason is left town prior to assessment date. You know, um, number twenty is tax collector, cancel, the person was deceased. Um, within certain timeframe when it when it was issued. You know, number twenty two, tax assessor, cancel military exempt. So these things come up and they have to be abated uh, tax wise, and that's that's what we're doing here, okay? Um. Okay?
Yeah, just some of these in regards to, just as Peter was saying, and I know there's other people out here who. I I figured out what their field card was initially. They didn't even know what a field card was, but when they started looking into their field cards, they found out there were things that were incorrect with the field card. But it's put on the resident to actually police that card and make sure it's accurate, because if it's not accurate. And you're paying on it. It's your fault. So make sure you look at your field card and make sure it's accurate.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Let's move on to number fifteen and we'll do those two at the same time, okay? You good with that? All right, number fifteen, communication.
Excuse me, can you please pass the resolution?
Oh, I didn't do that? Get ahead of myself, I apologize. Motion to pass said resolution. Uh, we have a second, all in favor? Aye, thank you, Wendy. Number fifteen, communication of tax assessor. And finance director in reference to cancellation of taxes for certain Middletown residents.
Motion receive said communication.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, and number sixteen, resolution of the council in reference to cancellation of taxes for certain Middletown residents.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Have a motion is second to pass, Dennis.
Yeah, I just didn't know what fifteen TRTP stood for.
So those are residents that had failed to sign up for the residential tax rate. Um. Um, so. We we've basically, as those people have come in and they they've overlooked it, we've processed the abatement related to them.
So people need to look at your tax rates. And make sure if you're a full time resident. That you've come down and you've filled out the paperwork to declare that because you may be paying on a non-resident tax. So you need to look at your field card and determine if it's accurate.
Yeah, that's uh, that's a good point. I had a resident co- contact me about three weeks ago, a month ago and said, hey, look. You know, I'm not sure my taxes are right. Can you look at it for me? And I did. I called Sean, had the, they looked at it. And the reason was because they hadn't applied originally for or filled out the form for the for the full time resident rate. So when they did, the taxes went down about twelve hundred bucks. So it's important that we make sure that uh, that that happens. So that's actually on here tonight, that particular family. Um, and they're being abated twelve hundred bucks, twelve hundred and fifty six dollars. So that's. That's good. Um. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, excellent. So we have a motion is second to pass said resolution, all in favor? Aye. Okay, number seventeen, applications received for the following named persons, firms or corporations. Oh, that's part of the, that's part of the, sorry. I keep going. Let's go to licenses and permits. Number twenty, application of Newport Pickleball LLC DBA Newport Pickle one oh five Chasers Lane. For a vichy house license for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five licensing year, this is new.
Motion to grant said license subject to the building official fire marshal and board of health approvals.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I just have a question about that. How long does that typically take? Because we're approving it subject to those approvals. How long does that take before you see approvals on everything?
Oh, sometimes it's like a a few days. It could be a week. Sometimes it's a month, depending on if they have extra things that they have to do for like the. Building official or the fire marshal.
So if they go in there and spa- upon their inspection, these folks inspections, it might be. Hey, you need to do this. You didn't do this, or this doesn't meet the, doesn't satisfy the requirements.
Right.
Okay. I was just curious. Any further conversation or comments? Here and none, all in favor? Aye, anybody opposed? Number twenty one, application of, I love this name, Milk and Honey Kitchen. LLC DBA Milk and Honey, eight hundred Aquinic Avenue for a vichy house license for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four licensing year, this is new.
Motion to grant said license subject to the building official fire marshal and board of health approvals.
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any councils have any conversation or comments? Here and none, all in favor? Aye, anybody opposed? Number twenty two, application for special event permit from from Fab Newport. For first tee Rhode Island chapter, fall beginner youth development golf camp at Linden Park on Thursdays, October tenth. October seventeenth, October twenty fourth and Wednesday, October thirtieth, because that Thursday would be Halloween, right? Twenty twenty four from four PM to five thirty PM, the applicant respectfully requests all fees to be waived.
Motion to grant said special event permit and waive all fees.
Second.
Have a motion is second to grant and waive all fees. Is there any further conversation or comments? Here and none, all in favor? Aye, anybody oppose? Excellent. Another communication, number twenty three, memorandum of William J. Niemeyer. Um, superintendent of schools in reference to Middletown High School CTE program.
Motion to continue this item to the Oc- October twenty first, twenty twenty four regular meeting. Of the council at the request of the school administration.
Second.
Have a motion is second to continue. All in favor? Aye, anybody oppose? Motion carries public hearings, number twenty four, the public hearing has been advertised. Applications received from the following named persons, firms or corporations for renewal of vichy house licenses. Uh, additional hours of operation for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five licensing year, and again, there's an attached list.
Public hearing is open. Your motion. Motion to open the public hearing.
Have a motion to open the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak on number twenty four? Which is the uh, renewal of vichy house licenses and additional hours of operation. This is number twenty four, ma'am. No, okay. Um, is there any councils that have any comments or questions? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion is second to close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye.
Motion to grant said licenses.
Second.
Have a motion is second to grant said licenses, all in favor? Aye, anybody oppose? Motion carries, number twenty five. Um, public hearings advertised. Uh, ordinance of the town of Middletown, this is the first reading. In ordinance, uh, an amendment to the town code title. Uh, fifteen, chapter one fifty two entitled zoning code, article four, definitions, section four hundred. Article six, section six oh two, schedule of district regulations, regulations. Uses in districts in article twenty seven C, short term rentals, section twenty seven C. Zero one, short term rental, application of district regulations and there is a planning board recommendation on file.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion is second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Yes, um, I'd like to, I'm gonna accuse myself.
Okay.
Um. I've said this in the previous meetings, uh, because I am a short term rental owner. I have um, an advisory opinion that I can have opinions on the new ordinance. But I cannot participate on the old ordinance and this kind, so I had to accuse, recuse myself from executive session on this topic. And this topic is not going to cross over to multiple ordinances, so I have to, in the abundance of a caution, I have to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Please see Wendy to fill out the recusal form.
Oh, Anne Marie Hogan.
Yeah, so Anne Marie, this is one of the ones you wanted to speak about. And yours was up first, so. Um, we typically ta- we'll take them in the order we get them. Um. So uh, is, do you want to speak on this one? Okay. Okay, very good. We'll get back to you on that one, okay? All right, so Mark, Mark Donahue.
Just your name and address for the record, Mark. Sure enough. Hello, it's Mark Donahue, six hundred Green End Avenue. Middletowner by choice. I came here, I came to Middletown for the first time in nineteen eighty six as a twenty seven year old Navy lieutenant with a wife and a baby. We found a beautiful home in Middletown, which we could afford to rent on a Navy O three salary. Something that isn't feasible at all today. We lived in that house for one year when we decided to enter the realm of homeowners and purchased a home on Walcott Avenue. Again, something not likely today. As the Navy moved me from Rhode Island, I kept the home as a long term rental for about three years until selling it. The severe lack of available and affordable housing for rent or purchase by working families in Middletown. Threatens the future of the town, which I have grown to love. While housing shortages and affordability is far from a unique Middletown issue. There is one particular aspect which exacerbates the problem here, and that is the explosion of short term rentals. I stand before you now in full support of the proposed town ordinance amendment, which will significantly curtail the STR industry. Yes, industry in Middletown. Last week, I downloaded the state registry of STRs in Middletown from the state website. There you go. Six hundred and eleven. Registered STRs. I cross checked every one of those against address. Addresses, everyone add, every address on that list against the Middletown GIS database to determine. How many of these STR STRs were non-owner occupied? Four hundred and eleven of them were clearly non-owner occupied with owners coming from as far away as Hawaii and San Francisco. And as close as Newport and Portsmouth, and of course, Middletown also. If these four hundred plus dwellings were suddenly available to the working families as long term rentals or available for purchase. It would lead to reduced rent and purchase prices, thereby making it possible once again for working families to afford to live in Middletown. These six hundred plus STRs are not all mansions available to only the very rich, as some of the STR owners would like you to believe. Many, if not most of them would be ideal starter homes for a young family or first time home buyer. With competition without, but with, but with competition from greedy businesses who see these homes not as places to live. But as dollar signs, the purchase prices are beyond ridiculous. A case in point is the home next door to me on Green End Avenue. This two bedroom bungalow with a postage stamp lot sold for six hundred ninety five thousand dollars. To an out of area business person with the sole intent of using it as an STR. He is running a business directly next door to me in a residential district. Isn't that contrary to our zoning? During my review of this long STR list, I came across the names of some Middletown residents. Most notably, ten properties owned by someone named Amorant. Nine plus properties, they're hard to track because they're all covered under weirdly named LLCs. Owned by someone named Hoffman. And four by someone named Toronto. What links these three Middletowners? Well, they are all candidates for town council and you can bet that the, that central to their motivation is to maintain the uncontrolled. And ubiquitous STR environment in our town. The STR owners are a very vocal minority, and I'm sure you're going to hear from a lot of them tonight. And their interest is strictly self-serving and contrary to the future of Middletown. Don't let their self-serve- self-interest sway you. The town is approved and is soon to break ground on a hundred and ninety million dollar new school project. If we don't change course on the STR situation in Middletown, we won't have any children to attend the schools. The, there are other problems with generated by the glut of STRs. They can be nuisances. They generate traffic, they consume more water, they generate more trash, and most notably, they damage the fabric of a community. The community that I've grown to love. I would say we are at an inflection point and putting some serious controls onto the STR industry in Middletown cannot be put off any longer. Please vote to make Middletown a family friendly town, both tonight by supporting this ordinance. And in November by not supporting the pro STR anti-family slate of town council candidates. I want to thank the planning board and the STR subcommittee for their work on putting together these ordinance changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, folks, I'm just gonna, just a friendly reminder. Um. You know. Hot topics, right? People get emotional, excited. We need need to remain professional all times and respectful of each other, regardless whether we agree or disagree. Um, and also that because of the agenda, I typically give, like they give people latitude because it's important that you listen to your constituents, right? But we also have rules that we need to follow and make sure we stay within the timeframe, so. Pretty good job. You're in a few seconds over, not a big deal, but we just want to make sure that. That we we stay consistent, okay? We follow the rules. Brian Hoffman.
Brian Hoffman, two eighty nine Prospect Avenue. For those of you that did not know me, I am a local rental host, including the home that I live in myself with my two children. I'm also the CEO of Coastal Microscopes. I'm running for town council. Because I believe in more accountability, tax reform, term limits and a focus on beautification of our town. Tonight, however. I do want to speak about the proposed short term rental regulations. And how they will impact our community. While I wish that I did own nine houses, as previously mentioned, I don't own anywhere near that amount. I have three. One of which I live in. The recent short term rental subcommittee was a farce and was made up solely by three town council members who had consistently pushed their maximal reg- uh, regulations. Didn't include any members of the public or opposing viewpoints, though a public forum was held, much of the feedback was ignored and the committee pushed the agenda forward. Similar to how other council meetings have gone. This lack of transparency and balance is something that needs to change. Now, as someone who is already registered to operate short term rentals, these new regulations actually will not impact me directly in a negative way. In fact, it might actually help. Because it will limit my future competition. But for the ninety But for the ninety-five percent of homes in Middletown that aren't registered, these regulations will make it nearly impossible for them to participate in the short-term rental market. The new rules propose capping occupancy at six people, requiring owner occupancy, and mandating that homeowners be physically present during the rental. Let's be honest, how many of us here, including council members, have used Airbnbs when traveling? I'm sure many of you have. Can you imagine how restrictive and uncomfortable it would be if the owner of the home had to stay there while you were renting? These regulations would severely limit the appeal of short-term rentals, not just for tourists, but also for families looking to rent homes for vacations. Families who often need more space would be particularly hurt by these rules. The occupancy should be based on reasonable standards as they are currently, such as the two people per bedroom calculation, not an arbitrary cap of six people regardless of the home size. That's a fair and balanced approach, rather than these overly restrictive measures. By imposing these kind of regulations, Middletown will attract lower-paying guests who spend less in our local economy. Wealthier tourists or families looking for privacy, space, and comfort won't be interested in renting under such conditions. Instead, we'll see an influx of guests on tighter budgets who may have, contribute less to local businesses, which hurts the very community these regulations are meant to protect. This is in fact, directly lead to less taxes being paid on the rentals. The town is also proposing to raise regularly, registration fees from fifty-five dollars per bedroom to ninety dollars per bedroom, further infringing on property rights and discouraging homeowners from participating in short-term rentals. Many of my friends have actually registered their home recently because they wanna get ahead of the overly restrictive ruling. They have no intention of renting in the near future, but they wanna make sure they do not lose their right to do so in the future. This combined with owner occupancy rule makes it clear that the goal here isn't just regulation, but restriction, and it's for property owners, the people who live here and contribute to local economy who are being punished. We all agree that regulations are necessary. I'm not against regulations, but the regulations need to be fair, reasonably, and overly, fair, reasonable, and not overly restrictive. The rules should aim to protect our community without eroding property rights or harming local businesses. Short-term rentals provide significant economic benefits, with Airbnb alone generating billions of dollars across the United States in twenty-twenty-three. Visitors staying in short-term rentals spend an average of a hundred sixty dollars per day on local businesses, money that helps our local economy thrive, not to mention fees and taxes brought in directly. Let's not forget the tax revenue that short-term rentals generate. In twenty-twenty-three, Airbnb guests contributed twenty-four billion dollars in taxes nationwide, helping fund essential public services like road maintenance, public safety, and schools. At a time when property values and taxes are rising in town, many Middletown homeowners rely on short-term rentals to cover their costs and stay in their homes. The proposed regulations will also hurt those residents. There's also the issues of keeping hotel prices competitive. Short-term rentals keep hotel monopolies from driving up prices, and they keep money in the pockets of local residents, rather than the hands of large, out-of-state hotel conglomerates. These, these companies do not invest in our town as our local residents do. Beyond addressing the new restrictions and ballooning fees, I believe in increasing accountability to our local government. While regulations are necessary, they must be fair and they must be balanced. The current short-term regulations go too far, infringing on property rights and sacrificing our local economy. We need a solution that protects property owners, encourages tourism, and supports financial stability of our community, while being sure to maintain Middletown as a place where people wanna live. In order to do this, we need leadership that's willing to listen to the residents and act in their best interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Lawrence Frank, eight O'Donnell Road, Middletown. I am a member of the Middletown Comprehensive Community Plan Committee, which has spent a great deal of time on the issue of housing. In front of you are excerpts from the most recent draft, under the heading entitled vacancy, it reads as follows. A seven to eight percent vacancy is generally considered a healthy maximum per industry standards. A high vacancy rate of seven to eight percent or greater can be an indicator of growing numbers of seasonal second homes and short-term rentals. Middletown's twelve-point-six percent vacancy rate suggests seasonal homes and short-term rentals make up a significant portion of the local housing stock. If you look at table two, housing occupancy on the following page, you will note that STRs and seasonal units contribute more than half of the vacancy rate in town. The current vacancy rate is sixty-five percent, sixty-five percent higher than what is considered to be healthy. This is not an acceptable, acceptable environment for the town's need of housing at affordable and market rates. Unfortunately, things could get worse. There are three, three candidates for town council who are short-term rental owners, Leon Amorant, Brian Hoffman, and Dennis Toronto. They own multiple properties, it should come as no surprise that they are opposed to the measure before you. They want to be able to establish as many short-term rentals as they want without limits. The unacceptable twelve-point-six vacancy rate that I have noted will skyrocket as these three individuals continue to put their personal financial interests ahead of what is best for all of Middletown. This short-term rental ordinance before you should just be the first step, the first step in controlling the damage STRs have done to this town. In January, when the new council is sworn in, one of its first actions should be to order a comprehensive analysis of the final, financial impact of STRs in Middletown. I believe that this will reveal the true cost of STRs to the town and demonstrate how regular Middletown taxpayers have been subsidizing the incomes of short-term rental owners. When this analysis is complete, the town can then propose shifting the true cost of STRs back to their owners where they belong. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Frank.
Hello. Hi, Michael Kelly, I live at seven eighty-six Indian Ave, and I've been here for just four years, although I've been a visitor for over twenty years. Wanted just to speak briefly in support of the, of the amendments for short-term rental, partly for the, largely for the nuisance factor. Just in the four years I've been here, there are now five houses around me that are now Airbnb, and several of them are advertised as designed for parties, and they've had as many as forty cars lined up along the street, the police come and ask them to move and so on, but it's, it's been a recurrent thing of having to deal with this, and, and at the same time, the, the tax assessment on our house has gone up sixty-five percent. In my view, if I continue to have this short-term rental places around me, then my value of the place is sixty-five percent less than it was when I bought it just four years ago. It's just a total nuisance, the owners, I don't even know where they live, I've reached out to try to let them know at least what's going on, people, they put up these huge tents in the yard and so on, and they leave messes on the beach, which our committee then has to go and clean up, that's Pebble Beach. It's wildly out of control, and I don't know the economic impact, I don't know all those arguments, but I do know that towns all over this country and in Europe are restricting Airbnb, Airbnb because of the impact that it has on, on rental units and so on. Most of the, the houses that I mentioned that are now short-term rentals were long-term rentals, so those have all been taken off the, the mark. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Leon Amorant, sixty Allen Drive.
Good evening.
Had a big fan club here tonight. So I wanna correct Mr. Donovan, I own one short-term rental, not ten, or maybe one and a half, because I have long-term tenants in that right now, that are actually from Spain, and it, the short-term rental that I do for that one in the two months allows me to keep the rent down for them during the, during the school year, where they come and their kids attend the schools here. So that's a way we're keeping rents down for some long-term residents, so that's a fact. Lot of misinformation presented tonight, I hope you guys don't take it all seriously, because there is, you do have resources in town that are working on this, quite significantly according to the next agenda item with the itemization of time spent on short-term rentals. So there's a significant amount of ti- ti- time and resources in the town spent on managing short-term rentals. With all, all indications are that being managed just fine, there isn't many issues, they represent four or five percent of the housing stock. This ordinance tonight, I got no skin in the game, I've been accused of wanting to build my short-term rental portfolio. I have no plans on doing that, I actually have no plans on investing in Middletown anytime in the near future, because the regulations and the taxes are getting completely out of hand, and it's driving investment away from Middletown, and that's another fact. It's very hard to afford property here, live here, pay the taxes here. What this ordinance will do is it will remove the property rights of ninety-five percent of the public that owns property in Middletown, that's another fact. And they're not gonna be able to rent their homes freely, they're gonna have to go to the zoning board to get a special use permit, which is a very high hurdle. You have to go hire a lawyer, advertise, notify your butters, there's hearings, it's very complicated, you're not guaranteed to get the special use permit. And then, assuming they do get the, the permit, there's additional restrictions where you can't even rent your house and leave, you have to be in the building with your tenants during the rental. I don't know, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I don't know how that's constitutional, constitutionally legal, demanding where someone rests their head at night, I don't think is, is okay or appropriate. And the third thing is the, you, you can't rent it to more than six people of any age total. So, I, in my belief, again, this doesn't affect me, because as Mr. Hoffman said, our properties are grandfathered in, that's been stated multiple times, so anyone with an existing license and that's doing short-term rentals will be able to do it in the future. I think the public needs to understand that, too, this only affects people that aren't doing it right now. So, yeah, I mean, y- y- this whole, this is a hot-button issue. Interestingly, the, earlier this evening, the Town Center Hotel Project was presented, and, you know, people may have a, you know, a lens, and you may be shining the spotlight on the short-term rentals right now, but I think it's distracting from maybe a bigger issue in town, and what I'd like to call, what seemingly is the corporate takeover of a Quinac Island and the Atlantic citification of a Quinac Island, which is happening as we speak. So, I appreciate that this is a topic and a point of concern, but I think it's actually, it might be actually designed to take the focus from the public away from another really, really big thing that's happening, that's going to change the future trajectory of this town. And that's just my opinion, but that's, that's how I feel. But yeah, short-term, like vacation homes have been part of Middletown for over a hundred years, this is nothing new. This is nothing new. So to portray it as some kind of newly-created evil in this town is not fair, it's not accurate. There's a lot of hate and vitriol. I'm getting attacked online, social media, my, my children are being brought into this by anonymous posters. It's kinda scary, my wife is scared, we're, we're, you know, we're watching our kids closely, people are bringing them into the conversation, it's inappropriate. This kind of vitriol and hate that's been kind of generating over the years has led us to this point, where we have people yelling at people in council meetings, and no one's doing anything about it, no one's admonishing any, any of that, or even resisting any of the misinformation. So, that's kind of all I have to say, I, I don't appreciate the personal attacks, not by you, but by, you know, the members of the public and how it's been allowed to just persist over time. So, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. I, I always thought we conducted a pretty good meeting, actually. Sometimes things get a little heated, people get passionate, but we don't, we don't let anybody attack anybody, that's for sure. I wouldn't tolerate that. Okay. Annabelle Manning.
Annabelle Manning at seven eighty-six Indian Avenue. My husband already spoke up, so I won't, you know, he's pretty much said everything. I support the amendment, I think that we need to figure out ways where we can have rentals, but to have more restrictions and allow for the rest of the neighborhoods to live in a, you know, without all these problems around us, noise, nuisance, we don't know who these people are, and they're constantly making it very difficult for the people around them without any respect. So somehow, we have to figure this out, but I'm not gonna go into any detail because he's already done that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Art Weber, one forty-five Island Drive. I had a call today from a great friend of mine and yours, John Bagwell, who's not getting around as fast as he used to, he's only in his nineties. So he wanted me to ask him a questions, three questions, and I know maybe this isn't the place for it, but you can consider them. One of his questions is kind of interesting, is if you're in an owner-occupied situation in short-term rentals, and you have five of them, how do you do that? Do you get roller skates? So that's something to consider for multi-use short-term rentals, okay? Secondly is selling existing units. What's the procedure going to be in the regulations? Will the new owners have to start from scratch and go through the regulation process all over again, or can they pick up the existing documents and, and take care of it? So that's, and then will people that currently have these units be grandfathered in whatever comes up with regulations or statutes, whatever we do? So my other, that's for John, and not for me. You know, I've been on the planning board for a long time, and a long time ago, I got some advice from two old guys, now I'm an old guy myself, and I said, in nineteen ninety-nine, what do I have to do? And he said, it's simple, do what's best for the town. And I think I have, and the people I've worked with all these years have done just that. So I'm a little concerned when we select people for that board, because it's very special to me. So a while back, Joe Piersek, who happens to be a planner and zoner and is sleep for the company.
Can I just ask, does that have to do with short-term rentals?
Yes, yes, I'll get to, okay. So, again, who Joe does his stuff in his sleep, planning and zoning, he wasn't selected. So, we selected a person who's one of my neighbors, and it turns out, he's a one-trick short-term rental zealot, and I'm telling you, and I have done this for a long time, and those are not the people this town should put on its planning board. We need people with a broad breadth, that can do about seventeen things at once, it's good for this town. And right now, we have six people doing that on the council and one that's not. It doesn't make him a bad person, but I just recommend to the council, we, we really think a little bit more perhaps about who goes on that board. Thank you.
Okay. All right, do we have any more?
Yep.
We do. Dave Bruslow. Dave Rushlow.
Good evening, and my name is David Rushlow. I reside at 32 Ellery Avenue, Middletown. Okay, let's, why don't we just do it? You know, first of all, I want to say to Mr. Welch, there is the idea now, my place is I only have six people that I, at the backs that I bring in. But if I had a house that could hold 12, legally do it with all the bedrooms and everything like that, what are you going to tell me next? What color car am I going to buy? You know, what am I going to, well, how am I going to dress? No, that's wrong. What you're, you're wrong about that. But I wanted to say, the thing I wanted to say is, let's get rid of all the short-term rentals. When we were all kids growing up, we went away, whether it be Hosniak Beach, we went away, whether it be here at Newport or whatever, we formed memories. We formed memories. I'm going to tell you, my wife right here, when we have, one of our families, they come, they've been coming with me about six years now. They draw, the kids draw pictures for my wife when they leave to thank you for letting their family stay there. If you take all this away, where are all these people going to go to form these memories? Where are they going to go? What are they going to do, stay in a hotel? No. You're taking away a dream of all the little kids. We've had them when they were this tall, and now the one that comes in now is taller than I am. But he's got all the dreams that he's had, making it that I've been so lucky to come here. And that's what we have. We've had people, we even had the ambassador of, for the United States, Ukraine stay with us, okay? We've had people from Germany, Netherlands, Australia, Iceland, the Netherlands and everything. All these kids are forming memories. You're taking them away. What? What? Things here are working pretty damn good right now, but you're going to take all that away. Where are they going to go? I'm really disgusted, I really am. I really am. We work hard. We work hard all the time to keep that place up. And what we do right now? What we do right now, it really bothers me what you're doing. It's wrong. It's wrong.
Dave, you're grandfathered in, right?
What's that?
You're grandfathered in.
Yes, and I know.
This is for ones going forward.
What's that?
This is for ones going forward.
Oh, no, I know that.
This doesn't affect you.
I'm speaking for them too. I think that if you run your place right, you run a business right and everything like that, we can give people, we can't limit, I, I'm looking at it that I could really luck out because you're going to get rid of everybody else. Who are they going to come to? Me? And that's not right. I just think that you cannot limit a number of people in a house. If I want to buy a white car, I want to be able to. I went to Nam so that I could fight for my country and enjoy everything and, but I don't have, stand somebody telling me how many people I can have in my house. I don't like that at all. That's wrong. You're going down the wrong road. Wrong road. But you can't, like I say, you don't want to be repetitive, but the dreams that these people have when these kids come in and families, and even when the families come in, they say, you know what? I'd like to buy a house around here. This is beautiful. I've sold three houses to people that lived there. They don't, they don't take on short-term rentals, they just moved here because when they came in and they stayed with me, they liked it so much. You know, I just don't get it. All these years, I've had the place for 22 years. I just don't understand where you're going, why you hate it so much. It wasn't, it's because the police let it go. They let it get to a point where anything could happen. There was people that were running across the street, the thing that come up with them was, why do you, why do you guys come here all the time? It was a bachelorette party. Oh, because we can get away with anything in Newport. That's what they said, get away with anything in Newport. Because you never, and I tell you all the time, you never enforced the laws that were done in the 90s. You never did. You let everything go, there was nobody getting busted for anything. Nothing. I thank you for the time, but you're making a big mistake. You're taking away dreams of little kids going to the beach. I take my people and I drive them to the beach. If they need to get to the beach, I'll drive them there. I give them surf lessons. Whatever I do to make their dream nice, but you don't do that stuff about four, six people in the house. Come on.
Thank you, Dave. That's it. Is that it? Okay.
It's a public hearing, they don't have to fill out a form.
Yeah, come on up.
I'll just take it, since you filled it out.
Thank you, I didn't quite come prepared, so I'll try to keep myself organized. Kelly Moran, 16 Namqu Drive. I just want to be clear, I do not own any short-term rentals. I do help a lot of local people manage their own so they can stay within the regulations of the town, which are some of the, some of the strictest regulations around the state, although we do know that a lot of those are changing. The people that I work for are largely locals. They've grown up here, they have deep roots that run in Middletown. They're not these big business people who are just here to make money on, on the backs of residents. And Americans make, they build generational wealth in real estate and hold generational wealth in real estate, and I think we're potentially taking that away from future residents of Middletown. I don't know what my future children are going to do, but maybe they want to have that right to, to rent their property as a short-term rental in the future. We don't really know what people's familial changes look like, their life changes, their future hardships, and I think that we're taking that away from some of the future Middletown residents. I understand that they're going to be grandfathered in properties here, but obviously over time that's going to change, and this is a very big change for Middletown for the future to come. I just feel that this ordinance is far too restrictive. As I mentioned before, we have some of the most, some of the highest restrictions around the state, and I do think that we're doing a pretty good job. I think that we however could do better as far as enforcement goes to keep the peace and make this work for everybody. I also want to say that the market is going to, and already has, taken care of itself. We're talking about an explosion of short-term rentals. There aren't going to be more and more and more. There are already plenty of people who have exited the market because it no longer makes sense for them. We're maxed out. It, there's not a ton of money to be made in this business, and a lot of the people that I personally work for are just doing it to maintain their home, to have somewhere that they can come back to, to visit their family. It's just helping to pay for the taxes and offering them the ability to stay where they are in many cases. I also want to talk about, we talked, I think it was Mr. Frank mentioned a study. So there's an organization called the Western Mountain Alliance, and they're encompassed by a lot of western mountain regions like Tetons, Fall, Colorado, and they were the first ones to do a study on how short-term rentals do affect the affordability and also the revenue that the towns make from short-term rentals. And the, I can absolutely send this to you if you'd like to take a look as well. I'm working on getting something done in the state of Rhode Island to actually get some harder numbers on what, what these results would look like. So what they found is that banning or heavily restricting short-term rentals do not contribute to creating more affordable housing. Really, it needs to be reallocated or built in those communities. Short-term rentals are largely of higher value real estate that if put on the market would not be affordable for the average family to, to purchase and reside in. And in some cases, the property values, when, when these restrictions came into play, did cause some of these high-value properties to plummet sometimes up to 30%, temporarily anyway, and that allowed some out-of-state wealthy buyers to come in and purchase second homes, which does contribute to those dark houses throughout most of the year. The elimination of short-term rentals also, and this is shown in the study, removes billions of dollars in revenue for the towns and cities. It also contributes to a significant decline in jobs for the local residents that are servicing these short-term rentals. And when they looked at the hotels compared to the short-term rentals and what they brought into the town as far as revenue goes, they, to make up for that type of money that the town was losing, you would have to build more hotels, which is not going to help build some of the generational wealth here for our residents. So really, I guess what I'm asking and trying to urge you to do is just to relook at this, to look at ways to bring in revenue for Middletown and help the locals build some generational wealth. Maybe this is, is not a popular opinion, but I think that we could look at higher taxes, tiered taxes, maybe lower for residents who are living in the area or in Middletown particularly. I am.
Right, you have to wrap it up now.
Okay, I'm almost done. So I know that the 1% that the municipalities get from the state is really not cutting it. I don't think that that's quite fair for the towns that are bearing the brunt of things to get, but I think that we can fix that at the municipal level. And I just want to end with one question. The ordinance does state that the short-term rentals are defined as 31 days, and the, the state actually says that short-term rentals are 30 days or less. So can we explain why the 31 days was put into the ordinance when the state defines them as 30 days?
So that, that was just drafted to mirror what's in, what was already in Chapter 98, the registration ordinance.
Peter, can you speak up? I can't hear you.
Sure. The definition section of the zoning ordinance that you're considering of what, of the number of days that constitutes a short-term rental, that was from your existing registration ordinance.
I think that's something that we should reconsider because we're talking about a month rental, and I think also 30 days is already a little too restrictive considering about half the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Rushlow, did you have something? Yeah, you have to come up and just say name and address, please.
Beth Rushlow, 32 Ellery Avenue, Middletown. Thank you for letting me say something.
Of course.
You keep saying that we're grandfathered in, and that's, that's wonderful. But when we're done here on our beautiful property that we've worked on for 20 years and we continue to work on it every day, we control it and take care of it. We have a lot of great renters, like my husband said. Well, come, when we're done here, I want to be able to leave it to my family. But they're not going to be able to do, to stay on that property that we've worked all these years for because they, the grandfathered in is done with Dave and I, if I understand that correctly.
Peter, can you answer that, please?
No, it transfers with, it transfers with your, the transfer of ownership. So it's not just personal to you, it goes with the use of the property. So long as the use of the property is maintained, it's a short-term rental, it doesn't matter if the ownership changes.
That was my fear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay.
There's no one on Zoom.
No one, no one on Zoom? Okay. All right, so this is the first reading, and we will have a second reading at the next meeting.
Yes.
So we'll get another crack at this, whether you support it or you don't support it. So October, what's it, the 7th, October 21st?
Yes.
Is the next council, it's really the last council meeting. We have one after that for this council, but that last day we don't do anything. Wouldn't be right to do anything, so. So that'll, we'll have another crack at this, okay? All right. Let's move on to the ordinance, number 26.
We need a motion, please.
Oh, motion.
Receive on its first reading.
Sorry.
The public hearing will remain open. Motion to receive this on its first reading.
Second.
A motion, a second receiver, then its first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, thank you. Number 26, an ordinance of the town of Middletown, this is also the first reading, an ordinance amendment to the town code, Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 98, entitled Short-Term Rental Leases is hereby amended by amending Section 98.05, Registration Form, Section 9807, Filing Requirements, Section 9808, Fee, Section 9809, Occupancy Limits and Parking Requirements, Section 9810, Owner's Obligations, Section 9811, Tenants Obligations in Section 9812, Local Representative.
Mr. President? Elsa Connaughton. Very well done.
I've been, I've had two years to practice on that name.
Due to a recent initial rule, I'm sorry, due to a recent initial ruling and at the advice of Solicitor Squirts, I would like to withdraw item number 26.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Peter, will you just explain the reason for this motion to withdraw this?
Thank you, Mr. President. So last Wednesday, there was a decision out of the Superior Court regarding Narragansett's short-term rental ordinance. The court entered a preliminary injunction stopping the town from enforcing that ordinance. So it's not a final decision, it doesn't involve Middletown, but I think out of an abundance of caution, it would make sense to withdraw this ordinance at this point so that we can take a look at that decision and consider the impact.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to withdraw. Any further conversation?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, thank you. So that's withdrawn, okay? Let's move on to town council, but thank you, everyone. Let's move on to, do you guys want to take a break?
Motion recess.
A motion to recess for five minutes, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Get going.
Motion to reconvene.
We should get going, sorry. Motion to second to reconvene. All in favor? Aye. Okay, let's go to the town council business portion of the docket, number 27. Memorandum of Solicitor, Council Solicitor PDB Regan, reference to applying for owner-occupied tax rate to long-term residential rental properties at the September 3rd, 2024 meeting, a town council meeting, the solicitor was directed to explore an ordinance whereby Middletown taxpayers who rent their property on a year-round basis, whether you're a full-time resident or just or not, you would get, potentially get a resident tax rate on that property if you rented it year-round. The idea behind that was to create more, potentially create more housing. You know, because I don't think there's any one way to tackle housing. Council Logan, myself, Council Logan's on travel tonight. He couldn't be here. He'll be here at the next meeting, but that's what that was about. So Peter, if you want to explain what the process is and what the next step is?
Sure.
That'd be great.
So as many people know, back in 2022, the town amended its tax classifications. It basically split the residential tax rate into an owner-occupied and a non-owner-occupied class. And that was based on a state law that allowed the town to do that and basically said, in lieu of a homestead exemption, we could divide residential to non-owner and owner-occupied properties and have separate tax rates. And that's what's taken place in Middletown for the past two years. And so I was asked to take a look at whether or not that owner-occupied rate could be used by folks who maybe had a rental property and they had agreed to rent it for at least a year. The idea, once again, to incentivize property owners to keep rental properties available for long-term rentals and have those available at a more affordable rate. The issue is, under the state law, you have owner-occupied properties, non-owner-occupied properties, and it's difficult to say, well, gee, a house that I'm renting to somebody else that I don't live in is an owner-occupied property. So we took a look, as Newport has adopted this about a year ago in their community, and they did it by going to the state and getting enabling legislation passed. And that's what I believe we would have to do as well because, once again, an owner-occupied property is a house that the owner lives in, just by definition. And to be able to extend that rate to a non-owner-occupied or a long-term rental property, we'd have to get a change in state law. Newport did that. They had enabling legislation passed that essentially allowed them to define what owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied is. And they then also adopted an ordinance that provided that, you know, an applicant who's an owner of residential real estate with less than four units and occupies one of the units as their residence, they could apply for owner-occupied rate for the full property. And also if they rented property for more than a year and provided written evidence to that, they could get that owner-occupied rate. So if the council is interested in pursuing that, we would need to prepare draft legislation. Did have a conversation with Senator Palma, who said that he was prepared to do whatever the town would need to do in terms of pre-filing that for when the State General Assembly opens up again in January. And we would also need to prepare an ordinance along with that, that the council could review. This would, so if we do those two things, this could be effective as of basically the next year's tax bill that goes out.
Right. Okay. Vice President?
Peter, is there time for all that legal stuff to happen in order to make it?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, and then, and part of that is because, you know, we've got a neighbor community that's already done it. So we can, we've got a good place to start from. But assuming that the General Assembly passes enabling legislation, we could have an ordinance prepared. The council could even adopt an ordinance, you know, beforehand, that would take effect once the enabling legislation is passed. So I mean, and Sean can advise us on, you know, the process of passing the budget and setting the tax rates when that would have to be done by. But there should be enough time.
Yeah. Okay, great. Any thoughts? Want to move forward? Dennis?
Yeah. So this was put on, this was recommended because of the two-tier tax that we implemented. I have a docket item here tonight to recall that, to bring it back to where it was. It was at 7%. When we originally did the two-tier tax, we were supposed to be at 5%, but we passed it at 7%. The council up here said, that's going to be it. We're not going to, we're not going to go and raise it any higher than that. It was more of a verbal. We wanted to put a cap on it, but we didn't, which we should have. And so this year, they said, by recommendation of the town administrator and of the council, not my vote, that we'll move that two-tier tax from 7% to 30%. That had a direct impact on the non-residents and renters of Middletown. So now we've got to come up with another ordinance to try to offset that. We don't need to do this ordinance. We just, we make a motion to repeal it back to the 7% and move forward. We'd be done. Not going to affect the rental properties. It'll be a moderate increase over residents for the non-residents. But right now, we've divided our community. We've deliberately put the tax burden on the to offset the tax burden to the full-time residents. I get it. I feel for the full-time residents and these prices being driven up, but this is not the way to go about it. No one's taxes should go up thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent, nobody. This council should be working on that. Forget the short-term rentals. This is the biggest problem we have in this town right now. We just physically raised people's taxes thirty, forty, fifty, sixty. No one should pay that amount in any one year. If you're tied to what the town needs, it'd take me twenty years to get to that level, which I'm paying today. So, I'm, I would, I, I wish we had done this when we had it at seven percent for higher for non-residents. The residents would pay their mill rate. And then we should have basically said, and if you rent your house full-time, you'll pay less than the resident rate. Cause you're doing us a service by creating affordable housing and long-term housing, which is a big problem that we have. So, let's repeal it, and then let's put this in place. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, you know, for me, it's, um, I think it's a good, good step forward. I think, uh, what we tried to do with what Dennis is talking about is protect the full-time resident, and I don't see anything wrong with that. That's what we're trying to do. People with multiple properties that are residents or non-residents, sure, it's gonna affect you. But it all depends how much the landlord wants to profit and put in their pocket at the same time. Because I've seen it over and over again that, hey, we have a lot of rental property in Portsmouth, and we don't go, we haven't gone up in a long, long time, and the taxes have. It depends how much you want to profit. Whether it's you, whether it's somebody that owns multiple properties, it does not matter. Our job was to protect ninety, whatever percent, you say the market is, you know, six percent of the, uh, short-term rentals or whatever it was, to protect most of the Middletown residents. So, I'm kind of appalled that you'd want the residents to go back and pay more, or about the same as a non-resident, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
They were, they were already paying it, Paul. It's gonna be difficult to go back, you're right, you've divided the community.
No, we haven't divided the community, we did what we thought to do with our residents.
The residents, right now, the community is fifty percent non-residents and fifty percent residents, right? Twenty years ago, or thirty years ago, I bet you it was eighty percent residents and twenty percent non-residents. So if we keep moving in the same direction that we're going, and we're not making any real change, cause this two-tier is, has a limited life, it's like kicking the can down the road. Once you get to fifty percent, there's no more. So then you're, everybody's back in the pool. So, this isn't the change we need, and if we don't make change, we're gonna be, twenty years from now, we're gonna be eighty percent non-residents and twenty percent residents. So, we need big change, and this isn't it.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Okay, any of the councils have any other questions on how you want to proceed here? Do you want, uh, direct the solicitor to move forward to draft some legislation? First, Vice President.
Uh, just, we didn't receive the said memorandum, motion to receive the said memorandum.
Oh, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Aye, okay. Council Carnetton.
President, I'd like to make a motion, send this to the, uh, Solicitor's Office to do what he used to do to put this in place.
Okay. Uh, motion is second, Peter, for you to draft some enable legislation to get it ready for the House or the Senate's, um, is a January Lou session, um, so that we can be prepared for, uh, moving forward, hopefully it creates some more housing opportunities.
Would you like us to also attempt, uh, do a draft ordinance as well, along with the legislation?
Yes. Okay. We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Okay. Thank you, let's move on to?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Memorandum of Beach Commission, uh, Charlene A. Rose Sorillo, Chair, in reference to recent vote on, uh, Bees- Beach Pass changes. This is a recommendation from the Beach Commission regarding the September third, twenty twenty-four communication of myself and Council Von Villas, in reference to recommendation to amend ordinance allowing the issuance of a second residential season, Beach Pass.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion to second to receive. All in favor? Aye. Anne Marie. Third time's the charm, you know?
Thank you.
All right.
Um, my name is Anne Marie Hogan, I live at twenty-three Ocean View Drive, Middletown. Um, I just wanna say, I am in full agreement with allowing residents to have, um, two beach parking stickers, especially because the beach parking sticker rate is very high. I think it was seventy or ninety dollars, which is very high, because in other communities, a town parking sticker is only like forty dollars for the season. That said, I think that, um, the beaches bring in a huge amount of money to Middletown's economy, and, um, I feel that non-residents should be able to enjoy all of our beautiful beaches. Um, I know that Third Beach was, um, limited to the town, I believe it was related to COVID. But now that COVID rules are outdated, I feel that we should allow non-residents to pay good money to go to Third Beach, um, because during the week, the beach is pretty empty, and then at five o'clock, um, large amounts of people come on the beach, and now they're on the beach, and there's no lifeguards, and they would be paying people if they had the option to pay, because a lot of people want to go to Third Beach, especially when they have toddlers. Um, not allowing people access to the beach, um, brings in a lot less money to the town. We have one parking lot, which is, uh, I feel is enough for the residents. Um, we, we could still allow residents to always be able to go to Third Beach, but still allow, um, non-residents to pay good money, um, to park. And that would bring revenue to, to Middletown and let people enjoy the beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Okay. Uh, do we have anybody else? Nope. Oh. Okay, nobody else, uh, so, uh, the Beach Commission sup- supplied some financials in the docket. I'm sure you all had a chance to, uh, to, to look at those, I believe. And so, but, uh, they broke down, you know, uh, two thousand nineteen, and then revenue pre-COVID and before that, and then after, after that, and a number of passes, residents and non-residents, and, uh, their recommendation is, uh, Bill, you, you wanna speak on this, or Kathy?
Bill Seiple, twenty-seven White Terrace, Middletown, speaking both as a resident beachgoer and as a member of the Beach Commission. The Beach Commission, uh, met and talked about, uh, at the behest of, uh, Paul and Barbara about their memo to reinstate the free Second Beach sticker, which, uh, on the, you know, on the surface of it, sounds like a good idea. Now, I benefited from that sticker for many years, as did many other people. Uh, and I'm, I'm sure it was done, uh, as everything mostly is done to help the Middletown residents. But I think in the end, it'll actually backfire. And I'll try to explain why. Last year, we sold eight thousand four hundred season passes. Split almost half and half, as it has been for many years, but really favored more towards non-residents. There was about four thousand residents and about forty-four hundred non-residents. Now, if you look at those figures I gave you on that memo, this, and this is historically true for a long time. Residents, uh, are one of the three main sources of income. There's resident passes, non-resident passes, and daily passes. Prior to COVID, residents accounted for, eh, maybe six, seven percent of the total residents, of total revenue. Non-residents, more than twice that. Daily passes, about six to seven times that. Since COVID, those ratios have changed, because we now don't allow paying customers at, at the ramp, at Third, we don't allow them at the Rock, we no longer have Tri- the middle triangle to do that with, and we reserve spaces for residents in the main lot. So your daily customers have gone down. Our stickers have gone up, have they gone up enough to offset the loss in daily revenue? No. So, by giving a, a, a second free sticker, you're gonna really impact the beach in a couple different ways. A lot of the people that I talk to go to the beach regularly, and they buy the second sticker. They don't mind, because yes, it is a little pricey, but really, it's no more pricey than going out to dinner for my wife and I. So people buy it now. If you're gonna give them a free one, you lose that revenue. If they, um, if you do give this free pass, now, like I just said, there was four thousand resident stickers sold. You know how many people will get a second sticker? I don't know, half, a quarter, but let's suppose it's a quarter, that's a thousand more cars. Now, we only have eighteen hundred spaces total at the beach. Last year, we sold eighty-four hundred passes. So obviously, if even a quarter of the people who bought a pass wanna go to the beach, they're not getting there. But now, you're going to increase the number of people who may want to go to the beach and are able to get to the beach with no increase in revenue, but increase in traffic. The number of spaces can't change, they are what they are. So we're now, we're now saying, listen, yeah, we'll give you that second pass, go ahead, go to the beach. Well, I might, I love it, by the way, and so do a lot of other people, being able to not worry about setting my alarm to go to the beach. I can now be pretty much assured I can get there by ten, ten-thirty, if I'm really pushing my limit, eleven o'clock, maybe even eleven-thirty. That won't happen when you do this. It won't happen, because you're gonna have more people vying for the same number of spaces. And the other thing you gotta realize, and, and I don't wanna stir up a hornet's nest, but, not everybody that gets a second pass uses it just for the people in their house. It's very convenient to have that second pass on a second vehicle for your friends who are coming from out of town to go with you to the beach, for your family that lives out of town who wanna go to the beach, for your, bleh, here we go, short-term rental people who wanna go to the beach. Pretty convenient for me, and because it's a, it's a competitive market, pretty competitive edge for me to be able to say, listen, I got a car for you if you wanna go to the beach. So you're opening a lot of can of worms. I get that you wanna help the Middletown residents, but a lot of us, and now I'm speaking as a beachgoer, a lot of us like it the way it is, being able to get to the beach. I think if you give away the second pass, you're gonna cut revenue, and we know that revenue is critical. If you look on the bottom of that sheet, in two thousand twenty-three, our expenses increased by four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. And that was mostly due to raises we gave, which we had to give to have people. Well, when you go to see this year's expenses, I'm sure they're gonna be more, because we had to deal with all those rocks, and we had to rent equipment we've never had to rent before. We don't know the impact of what's happening with the weather, with why are the rocks there, will they come back? Will we have to rent that equipment again? So, I think our expenses are gonna go up, as we have to deal with the rising, uh, ocean and stuff. And I, and I just don't think it's a good idea to get more people for less money on the beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, yes ma'am. Just your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Teresa Hook, Sixth Maidford River Road, Middletown. Um, nowadays, if you wanna take, my sister has a whole bunch of grandkids, if you wanna take those grandkids to the beach, you need a car seat for each kid. You have to almost be a twelve-year-old to be in a car without a car seat. So for her to take her grandkids to the beach, you need two cars. And she is a taxpayer resident of Middletown. These rules were started with COVID, and now the town has seen all the revenue and just wants to keep it and give no benefit to the resident. So, there has to be some sort of compromise. Yes, it's great that there's more money coming in, but you can't take all the grandkids to the beach at the same time, because they require a car seat, and you need a bus to take them. So, unless, and not for nothing, when you get the, the sticker for the town, the people come up to your car, you have to show them your registration, they put it on your car, so there's no way you could give it to an Airbnb person with their car, it's, it's not possible. They put it specifically on the car, so that's not, that's far-fetched. You'd have to peel it off, and then once you peel it off the car, it's completely ruined. So, nobody's giving it to an Airbnb'er. It's supposed to be for the benefit of the residents, the town payer, the, the taxpayer, you know? I mean, the beaches are for the families and the communities, so let's make it available. And also, Third Beach, you're talking about revenue, well, why don't you open that up to get some money from the daily passes or et cetera? You know, there's a lot of people who have children, they don't wanna take their kids to Second Beach, because the waves and the riptide, if you open up the beach to where parents can take their kids to Third Beach, it's just more kid-friendly and, you know, family-friendly. There has to be a compromise, it can't just be one or the other, you need to rethink this. COVID is over, we need to get back to where we were before. And by the way, the data he's talking about is from four years ago, so it's not fair to give a comparison of the, what, what the income was in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen to two thousand twenty-four. That's not right. So, let's reevaluate this before you make a decision on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, you're gonna, sorry, you're gonna need to come up and, uh, and, uh, just your name and address.
I, I thought I made myself clear, but maybe I didn't. To clarify, I'm not saying that you're gonna take your sticker and peel it off and give it to your short-term rental. What I said was, if you have two vehicles, both with a sticker, I can certainly lend one to somebody much easier than if I only have one vehicle with a sticker. And by the way, I have data for both pre-COVID and post-COVID, and we were comparing those, those, that data, not just pre-COVID. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any councils have any comments or questions? Vice President.
Thank you. Um, so, I read what the Beach Committee put together. I understand the thought of the second sticker. Um, I also understand the grandchild thing, because my wife does it all the time. Uh, swapping car seats, we actually, the second-hand car seats on the wall that we grabbed and put them in the car, so she can take my grandkids to the beach. Um, but I think the, the benefits that we just talked about, about having Third Beach available, having a separate lane to get in, and, uh, the parking space. And I am not a beachgoer, my wife barely goes, so I'm relying on information from others. Um, but the people that do talk to me about the beach, it is in a positive way, that they are happy for the things that the residents have over everybody else. Uh, and I think what Bill did when he came up and, and gave his, his numbers, it's, it's a math equation, and he's right. It, uh, we put more people there with no stickers, we're gonna, we're gonna reduce revenue. And, and everybody, and I myself, for getting on the council, also thought that the beach was a huge moneymaker for the town, and it just isn't. Everybody thinks it's the golden cow, it's not true. So, uh, I don't think that the, you know, cost benefit here is not with giving the second beach sticker. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Anybody else have any comments? So, I have a few comments, I think, and I'm a liaison to the Beach Committee, uh, Council Carnetton and I, and it's, uh, I, I see it a little bit differently. I think that, um, the numbers are the numbers. Um, and I think, you know, even if you put a thousand more cars, they don't go all at the same time. So, um, and even if it was a quarter of that thousand, right? It's still two hundred fifty cars, it's a lot. But we've also changed the operations down there a lot, where, you know, we do have that extra lane now. We are monitoring and saving spaces for residents. The last thing I want is residents not to be able to get in like they have. Um, I think that, I don't think, will affect it a little bit, I think we need to maybe manage it a little better, or a little more. Not that they- manage it a little better, or a little more. Not that they do a bad job managing, but anytime you can give, in my opinion, anytime you can give a resident something free and something that has to do with the beach, look, this is non-tax-generated revenue. Okay? At the end of the day, it's all Middletown revenue, right? Whether it's beach revenue or, or non-generated revenue, tax revenue. So sometimes, it's always not about, it's a separate fund. It's not, so for the, for me, for the residents, it's always not about that money. If you gave them a second sticker with the costs of things going up, I, I just think it's, for me, it's, for me, it's the right thing to do, and we, we used to do it. You know? So I don't agree with the Third Beach thing. I think Third Beach should just be for residents. There's no, for me, there's no going back on that. But I do think we should give the residents every, every advantage possible that we can give them when it comes to the beach. So I, I certainly support this.
I don't like the idea of a knee-jerk reaction. I understand the data that Bill is bringing forward, and I respect that, and I believe it's absolutely accurate. And I do believe it's a concern. At the same time, we have implemented a program, if you want to call it that, and we don't really know the detail of how it will work out. We're just presuming that certain things will happen. I, I, like I said, I don't like knee-jerk. It would seem to me that, that the reasonable thing to do is to try it this year and see what happens. And if it doesn't work well, then you do something different next year. But just to put something in place, and then before you've even tried it, to pull back on it, it just does not seem reasonable to me. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay. Emily?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm also a numbers person, and so I do agree, Bill, right? I agree with Bill. I trust your math, and so I also agree with what Tom says. In addition, I really hold the stance that even if you are a resident, parking shouldn't be free. We only make money off, off of those parking spots for a small amount of the year. Otherwise, it just sits there, and it's empty, and you can park there whenever you want. And so then it's not creating any revenue, except for during the summer. So that is a way we can bring in that revenue and support our town. We can't just not bring in any revenue. Like, we, we can't do that. There are entire giant books on why there could be no free parking, which are very boring. But if you'd like to look into it, you can. So I do think that we should follow what Bill is recommending. Number two, I actually do think that we should open up Third Beach to other residents beside Middletown. There are, anecdotally, I don't like to use anecdotal evidence, but I have a lot of friends around my age who have infants, toddlers, who would love to park and go to Third Beach because it is safer, there's no riptide, and it's more family-friendly, but they can't. So I think that would be a huge benefit, and I think we're missing out on a lot of revenue. I went to Third Beach quite a bit this summer, and it felt really empty, and I think we could have made a lot more revenue if we allowed more families to go to that beach. I, of course, would love everyone to bike to the beach, but right now, we do not have bike lanes that go there that are safe. So for now, people do have to drive. So that's just where I am standing at this, at this time. I do recommend that we take those avenues towards that revenue and creating just somewhere where we can actually go to, even if you don't live in Middletown. I just want families to be able to go to Third Beach, and I do think we need to use this as a revenue maker for the town.
Good. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
I just, I want to thank Mr. Siple for speaking tonight. That's why we have a Beach Committee. I like to listen to what they have to say. We have spent a lot of money. We've had to give out a lot of raises last year. We've really staffed up at the beach levels, so our expenses are way, they are high. And so I, I can't see, you know, at this point, giving away free beach stickers. So I'm not going to support this.
I'm on the Beach Commission, as you know, Mr. President, and they thought about this long and hard. They put good evidence in front of us as to why it should stay the same. And I'm going to side with the Beach Commission on this one and not vote for the free sticker.
Okay. So it looks like, what, do you need a formal vote?
I have to.
Because this thing looks like it's dead on the vine here, so.
You would only need a vote if you want to, if you want to make a motion. You don't have to. It'll just.
Die on the vine.
Make their recommendation.
You don't have, you can just let it die on the vine?
You can just let it die on each.
Okay. All right. Very good. Let's move on. Thank you. Okay. So let's go to, let's see, number 29, email communication of Council of Toronto in reference to review this section of the docket and recommend we have a standing project list that is reviewed the first meeting of each month. I would also like to see the list posted on the town website for the resident to have access so they can see the project status and timeline.
To receive said email communication.
Second.
Motion to second receive. All in favor? Hi, Dennis.
Thank you. I think it was probably back in 2017, getting on the council in 16, and I kept seeing projects. We'd be authorizing projects, approving them, and then the projects would go off, and they'd be off in Town Hall, put on the list, and would start getting worked on at some point. And I thought, in regards to kind of running it like a business, which I understand, I've been told it's not business, it's government, but I, I'm going to go out there on a limb and say that what I proposed was that we had a standing list of projects. So if we approved a project like sidewalks, road, road, some roads, just different things around town, that we have, you know, dozens of projects, that at the beginning of the first, the first meeting of each month, we would just go very quickly through the projects and give an update. And then that update would also be posted on the, on the town website, so people could go in and see the status of the project, where it's at, when may it be complete. And so that was my recommendation. What's come back out of that is saying that if you, if you want an update, you need to ask for the update, and it needs to be submitted a week before the council meeting. So any project I want an update on, I would have to ask for. And it's up to the council. My feeling is, I would like to see a master list. So as we create projects, we put the projects on the list, and we keep that list updated of where that project is, what's, what's the status of that project, when should that project be complete, and we should review that on a monthly basis, or maybe they don't want to do it as often as monthly, but I definitely feel it's something that should be posted on the town website. So my recommendation is to have a master list, have it reviewed the first meeting of each month. There's no conversation around it. It's just an update. If you want more detail on any of the projects, then you put it on as a docket item. So I'd like to make a motion that we create a master list of all our projects, which would be used to give updates of the status of the projects and the timelines of the projects, and they'd be reviewed the first meeting of each, each month.
Okay. Is that a motion? That's a motion. Is there a second? Okay. So and what is the process now? What do we do? How often do you update the projects list?
Wendy puts it on the docket for the first meeting of each month, and, and I'll just say, you, and I'll use you as an example, you've asked me to update on certain items during that session. So we follow the rules that have been adopted by the town council. Occasionally, we'll go through a longer list, but, but generally, that's, we, we follow that procedure. We update on the school building project at every meeting. So that's what we've been doing. I think the one thing that we've been concerned about is that, and I'll use tonight as an example, we have a number of items to still go when it gets later, but when we load the meeting up at the beginning and start talking about the projects, then the people that are here for other, more specific items, they, they get deferred and, and often leave. So, you know, you, you take away the ability for people to be represented during the meetings. So that, that's probably, if I was to express a concern about this, that would be it, is that having that monthly, you know, every month at the first meeting, you, you basically postpone everybody who shows up at the meeting, whether it's for a hearing or a, you know, an ordinance they want to talk about, or some other communication, you know, you're looking at 9:30, 10 o'clock before you even get to those items.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
That section was actually limited to 15 minutes. We've done this before. We've had it. I've had a, I have documents from Sean that list all the projects. He actually had pie charts next to him that showed what completion ratio it was at. It was perfect. And then it went away. And, and because we're not saying that's what we want him to do, he's doing what you're asking him to do, is the update on the school, and that's pretty much what we've been getting. So.
Just for clarity?
Yep.
I don't ask, if I need, if I want an update, I think I need an update. That's when I ask. I don't ask him. He updates the school and the big project we're working on. When we were doing this before, we didn't have all these big projects. So I think that's part of why it kind of fell off a little bit, because I think it's important, and I've talked with Vice President about it, is that, you know, we stay focused on the big projects, because it's very easily with the requests, especially the requests sometimes you ask for, it's easy to pull off and go left in a different direction, when we need to stay focused on the housing that we're trying to do with the, with the schools, the $190 million bond, you know, those bigger ones, Dennis. So I think that's what's important.
And I would agree that that is important.
Yep.
Do we even have a master list of all the projects that have been approved in Middletown?
I maintain a list of, of projects, yes.
Can I, can I get a copy of it?
It's not in a formal, it's a work paper. I don't have it in a formal report.
Can I get a formal document with all the projects on it?
Not this week. I can prepare something at some point, if the council wants me to. I serve at the pleasure of the council, not to an individual council member. If the council wants me to dedicate time to that, I'd ask the council to make the motion.
What do you guys want to do? Because you had a motion, it failed. So either we move on, or what do you want to do?
The way that it goes is, I'm fine by this, because now, maybe I have a better feel for what the projects are, but what the town administrator brings us up to date on are those things that have moved since the last time we talked about it. I'm okay with that. I don't need to hear every single project that there is that hasn't moved. I don't have a problem the way it is right now.
Everybody okay with that, or what do you want to do?
I'm fine with the way it is.
Okay.
Is it possible to get a list of all the projects that have been approved in the town? We don't have a master list of all the approved projects.
Well, that's your statement. I said, so each department has, has a list of projects. I maintain. Each department has, has a list of projects that they're responsible for. There are projects that I monitor because they're at a, at a higher level, for whatever reason, whether it's a priority of the council, or there's some sort of risk associated with it. There, there's some sort of characteristic in which I would track it from, from my office. You know, and I'll just, you know, it's part of, you know, and something the councils talk to me about is, is delegating the responsibilities out to the departments. I can certainly pull everybody, pull together a list, provide that. You know, again, this, this is, I want a list of every project in the town. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a overly broad request, and I think that's why the council adopted the rules that I did, which is, you know, to bring the requests forward so that, you know, the staff can stop what they're working on, prepare something, roll it up to me, compile the report, provide it to the council. It's, it's, it's a, it's a good amount of work. I, I serve at the pleasure of the council. If the council wants me to stop and have the department heads work on that, to prepare the report, we'll prepare, prepare the report. I don't, you know, it's...
Okay. So we're not going to keep going back. Was the council in favor of preparing, having, give a, a list of, of every project that's going on?
No.
No?
Monumental.
And, and that's fine. I'm talking about, we got a computer project going on, we got a building project going on, we had a West Main Road project going on, we got Eastern, we've got the Beach District project going to go on, we got sidewalks going in, we got pump stations that are being fixed. There's a lot going on. And people ask me about it, and I go, I don't know. I haven't had an update in a while. So if I get a list, then, of the major projects, then I guess I got to submit them the week beforehand and get them to you, just like we do before. It used to be I had to get them in every two weeks beforehand, but now it's only a week. So I, I'll just get it, I'll figure, I'll produce my own list. And I'll, and I'll get, I'll submit it for, for updates. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Number 30, email communication of Council of Toronto in reference to discuss repealing the two tax, for residents and non-residents, I would like to repeal the two tax tier back to the 7% from 30% and cap it where future councils cannot weaponize it against non-residents. This decision has had a negative impact on our community's affordability and our ability to be one united town.
Motion to receive said email communication.
A motion to second receive. All in favor? Hi, Dennis.
Sure. I'm just, I spoke about this a little bit earlier today, in regards to increase in 30% tax increase on non-residents. It's 50% of our residents of Middletown that we increased it on. When I signed up to be a councillor, I signed up to represent the whole community, not 50% of the community. I stand for our residents. I've been on the Affordable Housing Committee for over seven years. I've been working on senior exemptions. I've been working on keeping, keeping Middletown clean. You can just go to my website and see the things I've been working on. This here is basically, no, again, this isn't right. We, we should not be targeting half our community to pay the lion's share of the taxes. It's not right. So I'm going to end it there, because no matter what I recommend, or whenever I make a motion, it's not going to get approved. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Vice President?
Well, if Dennis is going to leave it at that, that's one thing. I'm just, I don't understand how this, and Peter, I would like clarification on this if I could. A motion to reconsider, something that we've already voted on, would have to come from someone that was on the prevailing side, right?
Correct.
So we already voted on this. How can someone that was against it bring it back and try to re-vote it? Isn't that against?
If it's, if, if it's a motion for reconsideration, it has to be brought by someone who's on the prevailing side, and the original vote, it would also have to be made at the very next meeting.
Okay.
This is also a situation where the tax rate has been set, and you can't go back and unset it. And also, under state law, the, the rates, the, the relationship between the rates, you know, commercial, residential, owner occupied, et cetera, those can only be changed during a revaluation year. So even if you want to change them, let's say, the next tax year, you, you wouldn't be able to do that unless you got legislation passed allowing you to do it in a non-revenue.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so is, so that can't be done anyway, right?
I just, one of the things I just want to close with is, when we were going to vote on this, I asked the town administrator, was there any study done to look at what the impact was going to be on renters in Middletown? And the answer was no. We don't even know how many rental properties we have in Middletown, year-round, half a year, three months, weekly. We know short-term rentals. We think we do. But we don't even know all the rentals we have in Middletown. We didn't take that into consideration when we made this change. I put it out there, and I know Tom doesn't want to hear it, but it was stated prior to this vote, it was going to have a negative impact on our economy and on the renters of Middletown, and they turned a blind eye to it. And then they want to say, well, Dennis, you're not for the residents. I'm for all residents in Middletown. And then they want to say, well, Dennis, you're not for the residents. I'm for all residents in Middletown.
I think it's, I I it kind of, and that's your opinion. I respect it. I don't agree with it. I think some of it's self-serving because of the number of properties you own. And stop, let me just finish. And and I think that's why. My own opinion is that you don't like it. And again, it was to help the full time resident. That's what it was for. Now, there's full time residents, as we all know, that have multiple, multiple properties. Some have one, some have two, some have three, some have seven, some have ten. We actually looked at that, okay? And I think there was two hundred and seventy-three properties. That had or people that had multiple red, full time residents had multiple properties. So that's why we came out with this other thing. So if we don't agree on it, that's okay. But that's just my opinion. I think that our job is was to protect them. That's what we try to do is the average person who owns one home. And that's a full time resident.
So, Mr. President, that's. So you're, everyone keeps telling me I'm doing this for my own financial benefit. This is really irks me. Especially when they get the numbers wrong. It really irks me. What I'm standing for, and I'll give an example. Okay? And you're going to say, well, Dennis, this is because it's your property. Well, yeah, because I'm in the fire. If we were going after other people's properties who may have a bunch of land. And we started going after them and starting to place new ordinances, restrictions on them, there'd be a whole different attitude. Yeah, I am emotional about it. I have a property that has, it's been in my family for over a hundred years. Six single unit properties that are under market value from a rent standpoint. The taxes, because of the two tier tax, the taxes went up fifty percent. Okay, fifty percent in one year. And it's been in my family for over a hundred years. And everyone will say, well, you're lucky, Dennis. You have those. Look at, you can always sell them. Look how much money you'll make. I don't want to sell them. I want to keep it in my family. I want to leave it to my family, but at this rate, I might have to turn them into short term rentals. Because I can't keep up with the taxes. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Okay. So let's move to number thirty-one. Email communication of Council Toronto in reference to discuss pros and cons of partisanship and non-partisanship. I believe this will help the community understand what they are voting for November the fifth. Oh, you did?
What are we doing?
Leon Sandy had filled out a form to fill to to speak on that one, number thirty.
I got Leon twenty-four. Leon twenty-five, so I thought. All right, hold on. Twenty-nine. Correct. Sorry.
Sound good? Need to do something.
Yeah, one second, Leon. Yeah, that's too bad. Well, that was twenty-nine. This one's thirty.
The agenda that was posted was misnumbered.
Different, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
So on this topic. Leon Amorant, Sixty Island Drive. So. This was passed, the tier tax rate at the time. I spoke against it as well. What happened was the town solicitor did propose a thirty percent tier. Nobody asked why the thirty percent was proposed. Study wasn't done and how would it would it would impact renters. I think the assumption was this only affects second homeowners and short term rentals. What I said at the time was the way the ordinance, I read the ordinance and this is a fact, is that it actually affected all rental properties, people renting full time. So. It passed. The tax bills went out. The rent, the rent, the taxes on the rental properties went up significantly. Landlords increased their rents. Of course they did. Costs go up, rents go up. They're increasing their rents because of utility costs, insurance. Taxes. This disproportionate increase was was leveled against them and they actually passed that on to. Their tenants. That's just how it works. So I don't I don't think the council, in all honesty, understood that. And if they did, I don't think it would have passed. Because I don't think anybody wants to raise taxes on our long term rentals rentals in town because. That negatively affects affordability. And that's what's happening right now. So now fast forward to today. And we're talking about having the landlords now come to the town. With their leases and say, hey, I have a long term lease. You guys want to want to give a tax break for that lease? To try to undo what you just passed for those landlords. Now, they may do that. They may not. There's apparently, there's a lot of people that haven't even filled out their resident. Form, so they don't even know, people don't know that this that they need to do that. They don't know. So there's people that are paying, even with these policies in place, they're not paying the right tax rate. Because it's a, it's a, it's layers and layers of bureaucracy that you have to get through. Fill forms out, go in, ask. The next year, two years later, whatever it is. I don't I don't even know the schedule. I just kind of put it in my calendar and say, just remind myself to, I got to do something. Everyone in town's doing this, or or maybe not everybody. A lot of people, a lot of people don't even know what's going on. Because people don't watch these meetings. They don't know what's going on. So these tax breaks are in place, these policies are in place. It's so complicated. You got to come ask the town for forgiveness. You know, I have a rental. Please give me a tax break. I mean, this is kind of how the system works. I don't, I don't, I don't like it. And what's going to happen, even if everything works as you plan? The rents already went up. Who who here thinks that when the landlord gets the tax break after they produce their long term lease, that they're going to lower taxes? I mean, I'm sorry, lower the rents. That when the rents, I I've rented for a long time. I rented, my family rented here when we started here. I rented in Boston. My rent never went down, no matter what happened. So what you're doing now is you've already increased the taxes on the tenant or the rents on the tenant. And now you're going to give a tax break to the landlord. So this is just one. One policy trying to correct another policy, trying to correct correct another policy, and you're just stacking things on top of each other, making things so complicated. That nobody understands any of it. I just, I just think this is a bad way to do this. And it's. It's frustrating coming from like an analytical background to watch this happen. Because I see it coming and I knew this was coming. And, you know, I I just. I think you should roll everything back to how it was and just fix it. And I know you can't do it right now because again, as Mr. Regan stated. That it's already happened. It's already a done deal. It it hurt residents, it hurt afford, and it hurt, it hurt affordability in this town, even worse than it than it is now. So I agree with Mr. Toronto. I think you should roll these back. I think you should get back to a a base state. And then, you know, work, start working from there again. Thank you.
Thanks, Leon. Okay. Thirty-one, thirty-one. Email communication of Council Toronto in reference to discuss the pros and cons of partisanship versus non-partisanship. I believe this will help the community understand what they're voting for November fifth and the impact the vote will have either way.
Motion to receive said email communication.
A motion second to receive. All in favor? Aye. Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Paul. I just put this on here just to get the conversation starting. On November fifth, there's going to be a a vote on whether we should continue. Our our to be a a nonpartisan council or be a partisan council. And so I just wanted to put it out there for discussion, the pros and cons of it. I actually have a, an article that I'm going to leave with Wendy, so you can make copies if people want to see it, but it talks about partisanship versus non-partisanship. It's an interesting read. I would encourage everyone to educate themselves on it because it has some big impacts on on our community. My personal opinion as I like, I I support non-partisanship. I think that the days of the lever, I think you guys remember when you used to go in to vote. If you wanted to vote for just all Democrats, you'd pull one lever and it would just give every Democrat a a vote. You'd open the curtain and that would be it. And same for a Republican. We went away from that. We went away from that. And what this article kind of goes around is when you have partisanship. Then people seem to vote more party line. And they don't look under the cover in regards to what the actual candidates are doing. And on a nonpartisan basis, it does leave it up to the voters where they have to do a little bit more homework to determine. What people are actually working on and what they stand for versus identifying them with an R, an I, or a D. So it's getting a little late. I was going to read a few passages out of this, but in the essence of time, I'll leave a copy. It's a goodparty.org is the name of it. And you can get it online. And it gives you some really good insights, pros and cons of partisanship versus non-partisanship. So just wanted to make people aware that vote's coming up. So get educated on it and not going to tell you how to vote. Personally, I think non-partisanship is a lot friendlier. I think it keeps our community together. And we need to stay together. Thank you.
Okay, Lou DePalma.
Lou DePalma, twenty-four, Sale Court. Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for the time. I will be brief. I know I have five minutes and I'll try and use much less than. The five minutes before you, but thank you for everything you've done tonight, but I do want to say thank you for the work on the Middletown Centre and the library. Big deal. And we sat up there back when we negotiated the terms, as you talked earlier about getting the money for the landings, et cetera. Big deal to pay for the police station, fire station amongst that, and that land with acquiring the Navy Lodge is a big deal. So I just want to start off with that. You don't have to give me thirty seconds back. I'll talk faster than I'm talking. I know I'm not getting it back. I appreciate Council Toronto putting this on the docket again because it gives me another opportunity to speak about it. It's about facts. It's about data and it's about context. It's not how we feel. It's not how we want to feel. It's about facts, data, and context. Very quickly, we saw what happened subsequent to the change in twenty fourteen. Very few people ran for council, even less ran for the school committee. We have two spots open on the school committee now and how many are running? Two. Nonpartisan elections are going to bring a lot of people out. It didn't happen with the exception of one election. And we have a couple more this time. Many years ago, partisan elections, seventeen people, all sitting across here with the League of Women Voters, and I think I sat right there. I think that's where it was. Seventeen of us running for council. What was that? Partisan elections. People want to know where people stand. One of the challenges we have at times when people say I'm a U or I'm a whatever. People don't know where people stand. You can say what you're working on and that's great. It's about results for people that have been on a council before. But it's about facts. It's about data and it's about context. Partisan elections allow, as councillor Tessier indicated and others, the ability to work and run as a team and work as a team and understand and appreciate this is how we do things. What does that come? It comes from the farm team and basis of Republican town committees, Democratic town committees, being able to work, bring people together. To build that farm team, whether it's on planning boards, zoning boards, and nurture those folks, cultivate that, to build the base of candidates to run. Mr. President, I'll leave it there. Well beyond, well less than the three minutes. I'm going to not get to my three minute mark.
Outstanding, Senator.
But thank you for the time, Council Toronto, for putting this on the docket. I didn't plan on being in here, but. I'm glad to be able to hear to articulate and I encourage folks to support question six and question seven. It's facts, it's data. The facts and the data show have shown categorically that nonpartisan elections have not brought people out as the expectation. And that was a big driver of what it would do when it was first put in place. I remember. Testifying here with several other members about why not to do it, and it was bipartisan in nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Okay. All right, let's move on. Thank you for bringing that up. Let's move on to the town administrator. Form of the docket. Number thirty-two. Is the memorandum of town administrator in reference to the ordinance on animal waste, recommendation of the Beach Commission.
Motion to receive said memorandum and place a proposed ordinance amendment on the first December regular town council meeting.
Motion is second. Any discussion on this? All in favor? Aye. Number thirty-three, memorandum of town administrator in reference to amending ordinance on the tree preservation, on tree preservation and protection, chapter ninety-six.
Motion to receive said memorandum and place the proposed ordinance amendment on the first December regular town council meeting.
Is there any discussion on this? Here and none. All in favor? Aye. Number thirty-four, memorandum of town administrator in reference to adding ordinance to regulate temporary storage units on residential property.
Motion to receive said memorandum, direct the town solicitor to prepare a proposed ordinance. And place it on the first December regular town council meeting.
I have a question. So where is this? What's the issue with this?
We are having an issue with people. Having these separate temporary storage units on their properties and they they don't go away. They they've become sort of like sheds. And that that's the, that's the issue. There there needs to be some sort of, that's the discussion, I guess, ultimately with the council. There needs to be some sort of. Sun setting of how long these, and it's, it's, it can be the pods, it can be containers, shipping containers. We we just, we've had a number of issues with them. This is coming from the zoning department.
Okay. Are people, do you think people are doing that because it's cheaper to do that than rent a storage unit?
I do, you know. They they start to rent it and then they just end up buying it and it ends up sitting in their their property indefinitely.
Do you have neighbors complaining or is it just zoning?
It's neighbors complaining to zoning.
Okay. All right, well, you know, if we're reelected, we'll take a look at that. A motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Number thirty-five, memorandum of town administrator in reference to right away parking on Walcott Ave.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
A motion is second to receive. All in favor? Aye. Shaun.
As you can see from my memo, this is actually a discussion that's gone on for a number of years now. Where we've been trying to identify. A set of parking regulations for the south end of Walcott Avenue. And 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 the issue being that. We we have a number of parkers basically in that 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 area. And it's it's cause of disruption within the neighborhood. I know over the past couple of weeks, you've received a number of emails from the. Neighborhood talking about that. There's been issues throughout the summer and in the past summers. Talking about a number of cars during the summer season that. Not only are 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 in the neighborhood, but 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 they're into the evening. People concerned about. Their security, concerned about just the, I mean, parking, parking has been just a an over, you know, the over overwhelming issue with it. What what we talked about in two thousand and eleven was that we would create three parking spaces down in that area. That would have some regulations around them where. Looking at basically parking between sunrise and sunset for generally. And trying to get it so that there's some organization to it similar to what we did on Kingfisher. When we established a parking pattern or regulation around that area. Since that time, we've done a couple of things out there. One of them was we needed to do. A survey of the area because we talk about where the right away is. We actually went out with Crossman Engineering. We did a survey just so we know where the lot lines are. Where we can fit the vehicles so that they they operate correctly. We've talked to a number of the residents and again, many of them have emailed you. And the recommendation that I'm bringing back to you tonight is that we basically can come up with a plan for two parking spaces at that south end of. Walcott Avenue. That we limit the parking time between sunrise and sunset. And that we have some sort of a resident sticker on those. I know since this memo has been on the docket, there's been a lot of discussion about fishermen, fisherman access and looking at something similar to what Newport does with the. and looking at something similar to what Newport does with the Fisherman's Pass. I think that's something that we could work into a final proposal. Just being a fisherman myself, I understand, you know, why, why that pass is important. And I've experienced with in Newport where passes have disappeared, um, from when I enjoyed fishing with my father down in that area. So I think that's, that's something that we can work on and, and do something similar to what Newport does. Um, I think this evening I just wanted to bring this back to you since it's been a while and see if there's any other concerns that you may have before we actually spend some, or expend some effort on coming up with a final plan and putting, pulling together a final ordinance for your consideration.
Okay. Do we have anybody who wants to talk on this? No? Okay. So, um, Tom and I, probably nine months ago, last winter maybe, we met with uh, the gentleman that owns the property, Kevin Perhamus, I think it is. And he owns two properties down there, uh, an open lot and 629 and 639 Walcott. And he, um, he actually wants to put a couple of spots at the very end there with stone on his side of the property just before the stop sign, uh, you know, like a, like a, you know, six by six wooden border, um, you know? And, you know, he's actually willing to fund it as well. So I don't know what, what your thoughts are about that. We have that in our, um, in our docket here. Um, Kevin's not here tonight. I don't see Kevin. So that was one, but you know, we want to make sure that I was talking to the, the gentleman in the back earlier during the break. And he said that, uh, do you mind coming up and explaining the pass situation that you were explaining to me? Just your name and address for the record.
Bryan Ernest, 147 Maple Avenue. I'm here as myself as a resident and also a member of the Newport County Saltwater Fishing Club. I was a member of the fishing club when we instituted this parking pass in Newport some 30 years ago um, to help the residents on Ledge Road. They had at the time, high school kids rolling kegs down the street. And they didn't want that liability in the backyard and I can't say as I blame them. So we came up with the fishing pass. And what it is, is the, the pass is available between December and March only. Uh, it's $20 for residents of Newport. It's $60 for non-residents of Newport. And a non-resident is considered a Middletown and a Portsmouth person. As a Middletown resident, I go to Newport City Hall every year. I pay my $60 and I'm allowed to fish at Flood Ledge Road, Ruggles Avenue, Wentmore Avenue, and also Narragansett Avenue. And there's special signage on the streets that explain the, the usage of the pass. Um, I think that this permit would be great for Middletown. It would cover a lot of the areas. It would create a little revenue for the town by having a financial number attached to it to buy the pass. Um, a couple of years ago, I went down to the right-of-way on the west side of the Clambay Club and I encountered a king-size mattress and box spring thrown over the fence onto town property. So I called up that, uh, town recycling coordinator. He had a policeman meet me at the town property and I was able to throw it in a dumpster there. But now that mattress is an unfunded liability. The town, you folks have to pay or the taxpayers have to pay to get that mattress removed. This pass and the money for the pass would help situations like that, that you would run into that might cost the town some money to do trash or something like that. But it would, I think it would be great. It would could cover a lot of areas that have become problematic for the town. Taggart's Ferry, there's always parking problems there. Peckham Avenue, there's parking problems there. The corner of Second Beach, Third Beach Boat Ramp, all of, anywhere on Walcott Avenue, the two right-of-ways there, possibly Purgatory Chasm. Anyplace where there's a parking problem, the police will have some great way to be able to differentiate who's actually fishing and who doesn't belong. And by selling the passes between December and March, you kind of limit the out-of-town people who sometimes are a little more problematic than your local residents by leaving trash and not understanding the rules and not being respectful of the neighbors and their quality of life. They would have to leave out of town, come down to Middletown between December and March, pay $60 for the pass. And sometimes financially that could put it beyond their reach. And then they have to go home with their pass and not able to fish until the fish come back in the spring. So it's just a good way of trying to cut down on the amount of riffraff, help the local people be able to have a place to park and increase the quality of life for the residents because they shouldn't have to put up with a lot of stuff that they put up with. They spend a lot of money to live out there and they have a right to quality of life.
Okay. Tom.
So I think a lot of that sounds great. Now I'm assuming, being a fisherman, that you would know that between those dates, there's fish that people would want to catch, right? So that's, I'm sure you thought that out. But my question is, what happens, Sean, or if you even thought about this, you did something like that. What happens to those spaces the rest of the year?
They, they would be available. I guess that's, that's part of the regulation that we would have to develop. But between, uh, again, between sunrise, sunset, but then you have this, this Fisherman's Pass, there would, there would be two spaces out there designated for access to that right-of-way.
Yeah. Okay.
And of course, there's always the revocation of the pass as well. Couple of times in Newport, they've had some instances where they had people leaving trash. Other local fishermen were able to identify the people that were leaving trash and the town was able to revoke their pass and they weren't able to get another one. So there are some stipulations for folks that get the pass that don't actually follow the rules. There are some ways for the town to be able to limit their liability that way as well. Thank you.
So how would, um, how would you, you'd have to do it not just for those two spots. You'd have to do it kind of town-wide, right?
I think what I would do is look at really where we have right-of-ways with parking. If we're going to, you know, have a, a pass for, for fishermen and try to identify those in a, a more comprehensive way as, as this gentleman has suggested.
Brian, you said they only sell them between December and March? That's it?
But you can use them year-round?
Okay. Oh, okay. I didn't understand that part. Okay. Thank you, Brian. Hey, is there any interest in moving forward with Sean and exploring? Is that, is that a form of an ordinance or is it just a fee?
It would be an ordinance.
It would be an ordinance. That could, would it, we'd have to deal with where you could park, where you can't park. You know, we'd have to eliminate parking.
So what would be the next step before that? Because we'd have to look at it town-wide. You're not going to charge a pass just for two spots on Walcott.
But you have to identify the places.
Right. Okay. You guys want them, Dennis?
Good question on that.
Yeah.
So, and those emails back and forth, uh, one suggestion was if they could do it from a time standpoint, from seven in the morning to seven at night. That was just one thing versus sunup said that it could be a little bit of, is it sunup, is it sundown kind of thing? That was just a request from a resident. And then are those spots Middletown residence spots? Because I heard like we have spots at Dunlop Park that are for Middletown only. If you have a Middletown sticker, you could park there. Is it going to be similar to that?
What's proposed now is those spots would be Middletown spots. And I think what we're talking about right now is adding in that those spots could also be used by, by someone with that Fisherman's Pass. I think that's what we're talking about. So, um, you know, I mean, you do have people, I know I've gone down there, you know, that, I've gone there to fish and I've gone there just to be down there and collect rocks and things like that. So, um, different people go down for, for different reasons. Um, there, there are bathers that go there.
So is this just, I mean, what it sounds like to me is talk to Newport or see how they do their thing and just do more investigation? Like, do we have any interest at all?
I, I would look at Newport's, you know, the way it works in Newport, talk to someone at City Hall. Um, I can reach out to the anglers and say, you know, we're part of this program. Uh, and then the other piece is, as Paul suggested, is we need to look at the other locations and see how, how this would fit in there also. I mean, I think ultimately, um, what we're trying to do is, is identify the problem fishermen that, that are out there. You know, who's, who's leaving garbage, who's disrupting the neighbors, who's, you know, the, the, who, who's causing the issue or the conflict between the property owners and the people that don't want to access the water? And I think if, if we can put in a control that would create more of an imbalance and a sense of accountability, then, then that, that's a major change out there. It, it's an incremental improvement, I think, for both the fishermen and for the property owners. So, so ultimately that's the goal. Um, fishermen, they fish before sunrise and, and after sunset. I mean, that's another issue. I mean, I, I don't think we want to, for that person who wants to, you know, float squid all night and try to find a, the striper's story of their lifetime. I, I don't think we're trying to take that away from them. So, um, you know, that's, that's, that's the story you want for the rest of your life.
Well, so you're just going to explore and come back, get back to the council?
If, if the council's okay with that, yes. I'd like to pursue it.
You guys can do that? Dennis?
Is there anything we can do? We've been kicking this around for Walcott Avenue, that parking spots down there. I mean, can we establish those?
That would be part of this.
But do we have to wait to go to do all the due diligence on the fishing spots and all this due diligence? When we know that we have to do something about this parking scenario on Walcott Ave? Because if it's only two spots, I can tell you, and I'm just going to throw it out, you might as well get some surfing passes too because that place gets jammed. Okay? I mean, we're talking eight, nine cars parked down there when that surf's up. Just all the way up that road. So it is, you know, if you're going to go to two cars, that's, you know, they're going to fill up pretty darn quick. And then we got an enforcement because they'll, they'll take more than two spots. There's eight cars. When there's surfers, surf's up, there's eight cars there. So just throwing it out there. I know they're fishing, you know, they're going. And the reason they want to have it where it's at seven o'clock at night, they have to leave, right? So they can't be out there fishing until two, three, four o'clock in the morning. That's the big problem that the neighbors are having out there because they're out there all night long. So I think we should move on this, the Walcott issue and just grow it. We've been talking about fixing that issue on Walcott for years.
Okay.
I will work on it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Number 36 is the memorandum of the town administrator in reference to Community Learning Center Director Position.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
All in favor? Aye. Sean.
Uh, Joe Pratt from the Boys Club is here tonight. Um, he is responsible for the programming at the Community Center. Um, so he'll, he'll fill in the details, um, on what we're trying to do. I would say it's about a year ago, uh, the governor had put out some grant money to build a communities, uh, to promote the creation of building, uh, community centers, um, throughout the state. Middletown looked at trying to make improvements at the Olive and School. Uh, old Olive, uh, mini, what do you call that? Little Olive? Uh, but the building requires a, a significant investment to, to be a community center. Instead, we, we basically partnered with the city of Newport. And they are developing a site at the Florence Gray Center that will provide really three, three pro, uh, tracks of programming to Middletown and Newport residents. One's related to education, one's related to health, and one's repeated, uh, related to employment. What Joe is here tonight to talk about is the fact that we need to hire a director for that center. Uh, and the model that's been proposed, um, the all-in price for a director is about $150,000. Uh, Newport has committed $50,000 to the hiring of that director. Uh, he's here tonight to talk to you about pledge, uh, Middletown pledging $50,000 towards hiring someone. And then the balance would come from monies from the state and the Van Buren Foundation. So with that, I'll let Joe talk about the program and, um, I, I think it's exciting in the sense that, you know, we're, we're trying to partner in this idea of wellness, which is something we've been doing over the last couple of years.
Sean, this was the money that we were going to lose if we didn't partner with Newport.
Right. So originally the, the state talked about giving us a million dollars to do something. Couldn't really make that fit. Unfortunately, a million dollars sounds like a lot. It doesn't go much with, uh, construction. Um, but working with Newport and then as other communities are fallen by the wayside and other, and a state program has fallen. You know, our project from the state is up to 7.5 million dollars, working in concert with the city. And, uh, Joe and Rhonda from Newport Housing have been working really hard to find other funding sources to make this whole program move forward.
Yeah. And this is just another example of one thing that Middletown and Newport can do together. There's so many things that we can do together and, and, and as we do them together, we can, we can find funding sources. Thank you very much, Joe. And that we can create these programs for people in need. And, um, you know, you're doing it instead of going at it alone, you're going at it together. So you're, you're realizing these synergies. So I think it's great.
Yeah. No, no, absolutely. So I'm Joe Pratt, uh, Executive Director of the Newport Boys and Girls Club. But here, representing the community learning centers, uh, which is Newport and Middletown, uh, the housing authority ourselves. Uh, and, and want to thank you first because I, I think you hit it right on the head. Uh, the fact that the two communities are working together is what makes this so exciting. Uh, and, and the proof is what Sean just described. Uh, this originally started as a million dollars-ish for each community. It's now seven and a half million, uh, that will all go into the capital renovations of the Florence Gray Center. So that in that center, we could offer programs in those three core areas, work, education, and health monitoring. Uh, we've got great providers there. Um, all the money that's coming in, the seven and a half million has to go to capital. Our plan called, as Sean talked about, hiring a program director who would be responsible for outreach. Uh, what we want to do is prioritize what the residents of each community want to see in programs. So they'll coordinate that outreach, uh, work with everybody, all ages, uh, to make sure we're providing services. They'll work on compliance and reporting. Uh, the federal dollars come with restrictions. We have to make sure we meet those. Uh, and then they'll also work with the service providers and put agreements together so that they're making, making sure we're delivering those programs for five years after the completion of the capital improvements. So Rhonda Mitchell's here from the Housing Authority, happy to take questions. I know you've got a big packet that Sean.
We're at the end, Joe.
I know.
So I guess, I guess the one question I have is, is, um, what type of services? And what will this director be responsible for?
Yeah. So, so the director would be responsible for coordinating all the outreach. Um, so both communities, we've already started this outreach. Uh, really trying to prioritize what residents want. Is it credentialing programs? Is it, you know, for health? Is it diabetes? Is it, uh, um, whatever they want in terms of what their services are. We've already started some, uh, on the education side. Dennis, I know you're, you're big with the after-school programs. It's taking those 365 efforts that the governor has put in place, increasing it so it's not just for the kids, but for adults, senior citizens, whomever. But what are the educational pieces that we can focus on? On the workforce side, it's training. Uh, it's perhaps, uh, trade organizations coming in. Perhaps it's helping the city and the town hire lifeguards. Uh, help to prepare people for first aid certification and have a, have a pool of candidates that can come in and, and be your firefighters and your police officers. Uh, it's really trying to look at the local communities. What do the individuals want that are the residents? And then how do we help make sure we're providing, uh, a pipeline for the employers and the industries that are in our communities? Again, we're, we're in the beginning of this outreach, uh, but this position is going to be really critical for us going forward.
Yeah. So how do, how do they, how do they make people aware in, that are in need of these types of services? Because it's a pretty broad, um, pretty broad spectrum of services, it sounds like. So how do you make Newport and Middletown people aware of what you're attempting to do and how they, if there is a need, how do they go about it?
Yeah. So this, again, this position's going to be key for that. A lot of community meetings, open houses. Um, we have sessions happening already. We've done one or two at the Community College. We did one at the Middletown Public Library last week. We have one coming up this week, Wednesday, uh, each Wednesday for the next couple of weeks at the Community College. Uh, we try to get flyers out there. We go to, um, community sessions and, and hand out flyers. Uh, we work through our nonprofit partners to get the word out. Uh, and we've had stories in the papers. So as much as we can.
Who hires this person?
Uh, this will be a hire. Uh, it'll report up through the Boys and Girls Club, uh, but a joint hire. It's really the city of Newport that's in the lead. So they'll have the authority over all decisions.
Okay. Any councils have any questions?
I think it's a great program.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really grown. Uh, came out to see your designs and what you wanted to build and you were looking for dollars to get that build out. Happy to hear that it's turning out to, uh, work out in regards to this funding. The Learn 365 program is exciting. You know, we have Lori who's heading our outreach department. And so I think that's awesome. Sure you've worked with her closely and seen what an asset she is. And so if we can complement each other, when we created that program, we didn't want to have overlap. So we wanted to work with the schools, we wanted to work with the public to see what services our population, our residents are looking for and how we can help fill the gaps. So, uh, I, I'm.
So, uh, I, I'm really excited about your program and us working together. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sean, what would be the funding source?
Um, I'm going to work with Mark on that. So one of the things that I'm working on with, um, Superintendent E. Meyer is, uh, what we talked about during the budget process, which is trying to reimagine wellness. Uh, so this is one of those items that we're in the process of reconciling. You know, with our overall cost of wellness programs, um, from a cost perspective.
Okay.
So, um, with the council's support, I, I'd recommend that you approve the dollars tonight. And that would come forward as a budget transfer in December.
You know, what's the timeline that you're looking on, they're looking, you're looking at?
As soon as we can. We've, we've done the interviewing. We've got a candidate in place. We just need to make sure the revenue's there.
Okay. Any councils have any further questions? I think it's great. I think it's great. And I'm looking to see, uh, how do you measure the results?
A, a, a lot of metrics. Uh, we, we're looking at what kind of databases can we share amongst the different providers? Uh, because there'll be providers in multiple areas, each of those three core programs. Uh, and it's about outcomes, right? Outcomes for the residents. Uh, whether it's certification that they achieve, training, jobs they can, they go into.
Yeah, cause come budget time, you look at that line item, you're going to go, okay, what's the return and what's the results?
That's right.
It makes sense, right? So, okay. So Sean, what do you need from us?
Uh, to approve, um, the fifty thousand dollar match to Newport's contribution to the program.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you and thank you for waiting patiently.
Thank you.
Okay. Number thirty-seven. Communication of town clerk and the council payable clerk in reference to request town council to match employee donations for adopting a family.
Motion to receive said communication and authorize six hundred dollars to be allocated from the town council president's discretionary fund.
A motion is second to receive, uh, and authorize six hundred bucks. Uh, all in favor? Aye, and thank you ladies for doing that. Boards and committees, um, number thirty-eight memorandum of beach commission, Charlene A. Rose Sorrello, chair, in reference to recent vote on Second Beach, uh, concession deck expansion.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
A motion is second to receive, all in favor? Aye. What are we doing with this?
I think Mr. Siple's here to talk about it.
Listen, you got one W tonight, Bill. I don't know about two. I'm just kidding.
Actually, I, I, I hoped I'd be here asking you for a big building expansion. So keep that in mind. We would want to expand the whole building downtown to lousy little seven hundred and fifty square foot deck. So man, you guys lucky. Now, really, all, I, I don't want to go through the whole thing. I wrote, you can read it and figure it out. But I think a deck will add a lot to what we do at the beach. Uh, I think that, uh, we need to, to do something to improve what we do at the beach. Uh, it was a rocky season, literally and figuratively. Uh, a lot of complaints about different things at the beach because of the condition. We can't control that. What we can't control is maybe making the experience a little better, expanding how we do that experience. Uh, I think doing the deck is, is a simple way to do that. Uh, the, the twin lobster roll situation, which Newport gave us, was very good for us. Uh, it gave us a lot of good PR. Uh, they made a lot of money on it. Uh, the more money they make, the more likely they are to increase the amount they pay for that concession. We give them a little bit more, we make it a little better, we make it available for, uh, different kinds of events that they can't do now. I think it helps us, makes us more, uh, amenable to have people come to buy that sticker, to come visit us. Because the beach isn't just a beach, it's also, uh, something else. Uh, what we envision is, and I don't know how much it costs to build a deck. But what we envision is you have that five dollars that's dedicated for every daily pass we sell, five dollars goes into that beach improvement fund. Um, I, I don't know how many daily passes we sold, but I do know that on a good day, you sell more than a thousand. We had a lot of good days, so there should be a fair chunk of money in there. Will it cover the whole thing? I don't know, but I think we should move forward, find out. We have an idea of what, what we want to see there. I'd like to see if we could just go forward and at least get to the point where we know what it would cost to do that.
Yeah. So, so Sean, how, what's the next step? How do we go about getting an estimate?
Uh, authorize me to hire, uh, an architect to design or come up with the preliminary design and budget for the project.
Should the engineer do that?
I think you need an architect.
Oh, okay. What you guys want to do?
Yeah, I'll support that.
Support that? You need that in a form of a motion?
If you would, please.
Motion to authorize the town administrator to engage an architect to draw plans for the second beach deck expansion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Siple. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you much. I appreciate it. But Sean, I, I would like the opportunity to spend time with that architect. Because we, we, I spent a lot of time with the concession guys and the beach manager going over what it would take to make that happen, so.
So we'll issue an RFP and you can be part of the selection process and I'll be more than happy to delegate the work to the beach commission.
I love being a delegatee.
Yes.
I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, number thirty-nine, and the last item is, um, appointment of one member of the tax exclamation committee to be determined.
Motion to continue this item to the first December meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Motion due, John?
All in favor? Aye.